Thirty seconds. Stand by and please watch for the on-air light.
It's like in everything these days.
We are on the air.
Good.
It's time. I've lost track of time. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to our Golden City Council regular business meeting for July 26, 2022. And as always, we will start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Yes, Counselor Fisher.
I'm here.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Wyler.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trout.
Here.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Hazen.
Here.
Seven present, Mary Ann LaForme.
Thank you. Next up is there a motion regarding the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Give it to Counselor Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as presented. Next up, we have public comment, and it's for comments on anything other than public hearing items, of which we have three this evening. We do have one person signed up for public comment, and we'll welcome you up to the podium. You know what to do.
I think so. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm Ken Jacobs. Live at 19th and Arapahoe. And I guess I'm here wearing my former Chair of CSAP hat, and it's hard to let go, what can I say? I sent you all, Nunes, today, two different emails on two different sustainability-related topics, and I'm not going to repeat those details here. Happy to answer questions you might have. I am really pleased that I think Theresa and I are very much of the same mind, both of the issues, the EV fleet and the solar garden, both of which are pretty instrumental to fulfilling not only the board's agenda, but the goals that you've set for sustainability as well. So it's very important that we keep the ball rolling. And I guess there's two things in common without getting into the particulars that I'd say up pertaining to each of these items. One is neither of them are done yet. Even the EV fleet study that you're being asked to approve is very much a work in progress, and we've got to get it right. If we stuck with the work that's been done here and even with the template that's been developed to date to evaluate whether in particular case we should buy an electric vehicle or a conventional one, it's not good enough. It really has to be done with care and with rigor and with an understanding that it's the lifecycle cost of the vehicle, taking into account purchase price as well as maintenance costs and fuel costs, as well as the performance of the vehicle itself. Ultimately, that's what's going to be done. So that's the point on that one. With respect to the solar garden, as I outlined, a business plan process that results in a solar garden that's really to the community's benefit rather than just the contractors or rather than just to more affluent households that have the ability to plunk down $20,000 bucks and subscribe. That's not the intent of this. You all get solicitations for those every month in the mail from commercial vendors. We need to do something other than that, and that needs to be spelled out. I guess my time's about up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public comment this evening? All right, then I will close the public comment period. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your emails that you sent earlier today to City Council, and we have both of those items on the agenda, so stay tuned for that conversation. All right. Did anyone else have anything they needed? Okay. Next up, we have consent matters. Is there a motion regarding consent?
Move to approve the consent matters, as written. Second.
All right, we'll give it to Counselor Hazen. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent matters are approved as presented. Next, we have a resolution, number 2869, supporting the zero-fare transit in August. And I'm not sure that there's a whole lot to say about this resolution. We talked a little bit last meeting when we had our RTD representative, Marjorie Sloan, here. But August is free month. All RTD services, bus, rail, the accessory ride, everything is free, and everyone is encouraged to use it as much as possible to get a feel for it, to understand how it works, how it gets you to work, to play, to events that you're going to. Highly encourage anybody who's inviting people to events in Golden to encourage the use of RTD rather than them driving and parking this summer and through the month of August. And the resolution is in support of the zero-fare transit month. Would anybody like to make a motion on the resolution?
I move that we approve resolution 2869. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion and comments?
I'm just saying, I'm really glad RTD is doing this, and I'm glad we're supporting it with the resolution. If you haven't done it yet, you should download the brand-new RTD app, which is extremely helpful and handy. It helps you schedule your trips and figure out the routes, and then when August is over, you can pave right from your hand. So it's pretty handy. I'm already planning ahead.
I got a question. I'm not sure if anybody on the council knows, but tonight RTD is voting on the biggest realignment of their routes in 40 years. Do we know whether the 16 survives that vote?
It's my understanding the 16L is not as part of that plan. It would be cut.
It would be cut.
16L.
And what about the 16 west of Federal Center?
I believe it exists in a modified form where you have to switch buses at a stop and to continue on. It's not one continuous bus from Golden all the way into Denver any longer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
I'd like to kind of challenge myself and maybe the rest of the council to, on the 9th of August, come back and talk about which ride they took. And I think if we're going to pass resolutions, I think we actually walk the talk instead of just talking the talk. So I'm just suggesting that I'm not looking for any others, but I'm going to be back on the 9th and tell you what I did.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Because we'll have more information, but we, as City Council, have been invited through Mayor Pro Tem Trout, sharing that information, to participate in a challenge in the month of August. And in talking with our city team and communications, we picked the week that we have a council meeting, which is on the 9th for that challenge. And we'll have more information about it, but it's basically through, and you might have a lot more information than I do, the Regional Air Quality Council. And it's for each of us individually and collectively to, in a week's period of time, try to use all other forms of transportation that we can to go about our daily business, whether it's to go to work, go to activities, go to, you know, meetings, and post about it, share about it, tell stories about it, and we'll work with our communications team to do so.
I hope I caught up with you, but I didn't. What a good idea.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anything further on the resolution? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the resolution passes. Next up, we have our second quarter financial report, and our finance director, Jeff Gansett.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We will try and go through this as succinctly as possible, because I know there's plenty on the agenda. So far this year, we've been dealing with inflation, supply chain issues, employee shortages, spending, which is both a good thing and a bad thing. When other people spend in Golden, we get sales tax revenue, which is a good thing. But our spending has increased as well because our cost of operations has gone up. So pros and cons there. Sales tax revenues up so far compared to '21 versus '20. Use tax is up, audit revenue is up. But I have a caveat for you. If you have paid attention to the sales tax reports over the last couple of years, and you look at some of the back pages that show geographic and by type, you've seen a huge increase in utilities, which, both last year and this year, which I have had concerns about. And we have a brand-new company that's been remitting significant sales tax. Upon further investigation, they are a new company providing energy to Miller Coors. And it raised flags of, is this legit? And if it is legit, how come we weren't getting that kind of revenue in the past? And if it's not legit, let's find out the answer. So if we have to refund money, we know about it before it goes too far. Well, unfortunately, we have to refund money. And we're looking at a significant amount. I think it's roughly about $450,000 of revenue we received last year, and a little over $250,000 of revenue we've received so far this year. And it's a matter of manufacturing exemption and location and all kinds of details. But that will skew, and what we are going to do is we're going to go back and recreate last year's and this year's monthly sales tax reports. I'm not going to give all of those to you unless you really want them. But hopefully, starting with the next sales tax report, those things will be corrected, and that information will be accurate so that going forward, we can do an appropriate apples-to-apples comparison, month-to-month and year-to-year. So anyway, wanted to give that to you so you can be prepared that that's coming down the pipe. That being said, sales tax is still significantly up compared to last year and pre-COVID and all of that stuff. So all that is good. Building permit activity continues to be strong, and related fees and taxes are up roughly 25% compared to last year. There is still a lingering impact to the community center from COVID. The closure and then the restrictions when the community center reopened and limited attendance. We're still, we're making improvements, but still not at attendance levels pre-COVID for a variety of reasons. I think certain people either found someplace else to work out or have stopped working out altogether. I don't know. But some of the regulars that I used to see at lunchtime, I haven't seen in two years. And I'm sure that's at other times of the day as well. So hopefully, we'll continue to get that attendance back up, but we're still dealing with some slowdown there. Sales tax graph that you're used to seeing, and again, that's going to be revised hopefully with next month's report. General fund continues to be strong. Currently, reserve of $18.1 million, fund balance, which is over 50% of our operating budget. That will change. It's usually higher the first part of the year because we get the majority of our property taxes, which is, you know, a pretty significant portion of our general fund revenue. Year-to-date, our year-end projection is $14.4 million, or roughly 41.5% reserve. And revenues are at appropriate levels. Expenditures are good. So far this year, we have increased our fund balance by $3.3 million, and we budgeted to use $2.5 million. So, you know, that's over a $5 million difference at this point in the year. Utility funds, cash balances are all appropriate at this point. Drainage has gone down some because of some of the drainage projects that are going on in the city, but still at an appropriate level at this point. Our water sales, as you can see, we are under budget. We are up compared to last year, but we are under budget. That could be weather-related. We had a lot of snow in the winter months, and we've had a lot of afternoon rains, which maybe has changed some people's watering habits for their lawns, irrigation, and also hopefully some of them are using better conservation efforts. So we'll keep that in mind as we work on next year's budget for our water fund. The managerial enterprise funds, community center, has a strong cash balance, but a lot of that is due to the subsidy that the general fund gives at this point. But as you can see, there is an operating deficit before the transfer. And cost recovery right now is at almost 80% year-to-date, which is very, very good. A lot of the programs that they're doing, attendance maybe for admissions is down, but for a lot of the programs has picked up significantly. So that part's encouraging. And Splash had a good first month. Weather-wise was pretty hot, so that brought people out. And we were able to have enough lifeguards for Splash, but that did mean we closed the pool at the community center at certain days and certain times. There's our look at Splash, and as you can see for June, almost equivalent to our 2018 revenue, admission revenues for Splash. Does have a slight fee increase built into that compared to 2018, but still compared to the prior three years, this year's been very strong for Splash, which is, you know, obviously very encouraging. Golf course continues to do great, and actually, the last two years has done better than ever, partly because of a reduction in the number of tournaments. That has increased the number of available tee times, and we have no problem filling the tee sheet, which just increases our revenues there. So continuing to do well there. As you can see, through June, actual is approaching the July budget, so way ahead of projections and budget on the green fees there. Cemetery is in great shape right now. One of the things you'll notice, that cash balance at 1.4 million. I have had conversation with Rod, and we will continue to talk about any long-term capital needs at the cemetery so that we can earmark those reserves. And if we get to a point where the reserves are outpacing capital needs, we can look at doing some level of repayment back to the perpetual care fund. Prior, probably seven to 10 years ago, we were subsidizing the cemetery and using some interest earnings from the perpetual care as part of that subsidy. So it would be appropriate if the balance gets too high to reimburse the perpetual care fund for some of that use. So we'll keep you posted based on, again, long-term capital needs at the cemetery and how that plays out. And museums' cost recovery is looking much better this year because they've been able to institute programs, and they're doing their classroom work and stuff that they weren't able to do over the last two years. And there's the lodging tax graph that you get with the sales tax report every month now. The one thing I will share with you is, and Steve and I have had some conversation, because the ballot question capped the first-year revenue at $2 million. And after that, it doesn't matter, but we had to cap the first year. We chose, we thought it'd be around 1.5, and we chose a cap at $2 million, which seemed reasonable. If things continue at that pace, we will exceed the cap. So one of the things that we may want to consider if we continue to have revenues at this level is potentially a lodging-tax-free December so that we don't exceed the cap. Because coming in just under is probably preferential to trying to refund that money in some fashion, because you don't necessarily want to give it back to the business owners because they're not the ones who paid it. And trying to figure out all the people who rented hotel rooms and went through Airbnb and VRBO and all of that kind of stuff could be very cumbersome and time-consuming. So something to think about. We'll keep you posted as we head into the fall, but that may be something we want to look at at the end of the year. All other funds are doing well. General portfolio is strong right now. We did receive our second half of ARPA funds, so we have that full allocation over the two years. That is sitting in reserves right now, available to spend if we determine the proper projects to spend that. So that's part of the reason for the increase in our investment portfolio. And then also with the second quarter report, I give you the financial trends for a five-year period. The thing to remember there is some trends because of COVID were negative in 2020, and then with the recovery we saw in '21, some of them were overly positive. But the five years cumulative are all reasonable. I don't see any huge red flags on anything, as I have for several years. Just make you aware again of how much the general fund is subsidizing community center, Splash, and museum, just so you're aware, because of the ongoing demands of the general fund that we've had over the last year and fire department requests and that. So we just need to be aware of all the various demands on the general fund and what's coming down the road. Other than that, we're still in very strong financial position. Reserves are good. Expenditures are at appropriate levels. Nothing negative to report at this time. And with that, I will open it up for any questions you might have.
That's a camera.
Yeah, you didn't mention it, but I'm assuming the cash balance at the museum is positive because they've already received their allocation for the year as well?
Well, we do, we take the annual subsidy and we divide it by 12, and they get one 12th every month.
Okay.
So that is part of it. And then again, their program revenue has picked up this year compared to the last couple of years.
Okay. Since I'm relatively new to this, and I'm not sure, by the way, the communication was great. We got the PowerPoint slide. We got it in the packet. We got this. And maybe because I'm a former teacher, it's like too much. Could we not get the print? Or could I, at least I will say, I don't need this too. And when looking at the report, I find it hard to read because they're all solid blocks. I know it's a minor thing, and you could probably change it in your template, but could we have like a hash for budget or a hash for actual instead of everything solid? Because I have a hard time literally telling the difference between budget and actual in terms of the bars.
Oh, and the graphs?
Just reading, yeah, just reading the graphs. So if we had, you know, a different shading, it would really help me because I find it really hard to read.
Okay.
So, minor, but it'd be appreciated.
Counselor Hazen.
You know, we've talked about maintaining an adequate reserve. And over my tenure on the council, it seemed that 20% was a good, you know, better than a lot of other cities. Where is our reserve now?
Well, for the general fund, as of the end of the second quarter, it's at 50%. We're projecting it to be at about 41% at the end of the year.
41% of?
Annual expenditures.
Okay. So when we think about a 20% reserve, 41% is real good.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to keep it in my head about where we stand on reserves. That's great.
But as we talked about over many weeks ago, depending on, for example, implementation of paid firefighters, that will deplete that reserve very quickly, depending on how many firefighters we were to add or any other similar-type demands on the general fund. So it's very good right now, but there is the potential to drop down very quickly depending on some decisions in the budget process.
Thank you.
Counselor Fisher.
Thanks. Jeff, has there ever been any thought on things like community center fund or museums or Splash at looking at comparables across other cities and what their sorts of recoveries are? To give us a baseline, I think when we started with a lot of this, it was pretty new. The Splash was fairly new for the region, and community center obviously was new for this type of enterprise. Like, a lot of cities just weren't in that business at all. I'm curious if we've ever looked at what sort of comparables there are with other cities and other municipal facilities to see how they're running them, to try to get a trend or an understanding for, are there other types of best practices or things that we could learn from our neighboring communities, or at least be able to sort of compare and judge against how they're doing year-over-year to see what the average is?
I can let Rod speak to some of that if he wishes. We do comparisons with the community center. When we established a cost recovery plan that council blessed however many years ago, cost recovery of approximately between 60 and 80% was deemed appropriate. Right now, we're close to 80% cost recovery on programs and things. But again, some of that declines in the second half of the year as some of the revenues are higher first part of the year, and some of the expenses are greater in the second half of the year. But cost recovery on that is pretty good. Splash is a whole different animal. When you look at the fact that we're open two and a half months out of the year, there are certain fixed costs with maintaining that operation, and it's hugely weather-dependent, and this year it's also lifeguard-dependent. When the weather's great, Splash covers all its costs, all its operating costs. If the weather's not so good, attendance goes down and we struggle. And that's part of the struggle the last two years because attendance was way down, and we still have those fixed costs to run the Splash.
Right. And I get that the idea is not to be making money off these enterprises necessarily. They're community goods, services, and I've actually been a huge proponent of that. I'm just trying to get at whether there are ways for us to still understand that there are ways for us to make changes and be more competitive and provide additional offerings and expanded offerings, and not just get stuck in doing the same old thing, focused on these, well, we're hitting this number, so our offerings must be good enough.
Yeah, well, you've got to balance, like, admission revenues and program fees with what Apex and Wheat Ridge Rec Center and some of those other places offer so that you're competitive there. Because if you outprice yourself on admissions, people will just go to a neighboring rec center. If we were to truly cover all our costs, we would no longer be a community center. We'd be a private health club.
Right.
So subsidy is to be expected. It's just what is the appropriate amount. There are certain programs that make money, and if there are ways that we can expand upon those, Rodney's group are looking at that. One of the things we've talked about as it relates to Heart of Golden is the potential that if we consolidate city hall and city operations, we could potentially move daycare and preschool operations over to the Planning Public Works building, which would expand those programs, and there's a waiting list to get into those, and they make money. So we could expand that, generate more revenue, free up space in the community center for other programming. other programming that ideally would at least cover all its costs. So, there's always potential of doing certain things, but I know Rod and his group do a very good job of looking at, you know, supply, demand, you know, cost analysis, comparisons with other rec centers in the area to make sure we're not pricing ourselves out, but offering the programs that our community wants.
I think that's good. The other communities obviously have been advancing their efforts, and I think it's important for us to kind of stay up with what the neighbors are doing, but also with the times in terms of what people are interested in doing.
Totally agree. And I don't see Rod here, so I must have done okay in my response. He's not right behind you. Oh, now he's coming, okay.
I don't know what else you would like us to say. We do have a really good matrix of how we determine what recreation programs should go or not go based on the finances, based on the needs of the community, a lot of different components that go into it. And it's fairly sophisticated in how we plan to program. And then we also are actively involved in regional groups of like facilities. We meet on, our staff meets on a monthly basis with the other staffs of all the other recreation centers in the area. We're talking about all of these kinds of things and then more like lifeguards and all those components and pieces too. So, I'd be happy to show any of council the matrix that we use on how we decide what programs are appropriate and how they're funded relative to trying to keep us between that 60 and 80% mark. Some communities, I'll just tell you, some communities want to be 100% of direct cost, and that is their goal. And that means that their mix of programs looks a little bit different than maybe a facility like ours, that the standard is to be somewhat a little bit subsidized. And there are some places that would love to give it away and the subsidies are very, very high, based on the culture of the community and the elected officials. Anything else I can help with since I came on?
That helps, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a follow-up, Rod, actually, on the museum. Do you know what the goal for that revenue recovery is? Is it also 60%? Have we ever hit it?
It is not that high. And I'd have to go back and look. I think that it...
We don't have a formal...
When we, when we had the museum come back under management of the city in 2010, we were hoping to keep the subsidy at the same level that we had been subsidizing the nonprofit that had been running it for us. And I know that that has expanded through the years and become greater, but it did not fall into that same category of the subsidy that we had had approved by council prior to that. So, I guess we don't really have a specific percentage.
Well, so like Bill's comment about associated communities that might have museums, I would be curious what their revenue recoveries are in comparison and whether we're in line or not.
We do have some of that information. We, Nathan actually started a couple of years ago now, municipal museum group specifically to people in the front range that are running municipally-owned and operated museums. And I will tell you that we have that data and we can share that with you. It's all over the board. It's even broader and much, much greater than the recreation components that we've been doing. And so, it falls back to the elected officials and the community and what the culture is, but they're broader than the recreation side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Resolution 2871, and that is the municipal fleet's electric vehicle and equipment master plan.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to try and juggle and remember everything here, so I'll take a look at this. This item is one of the items that's already on your council's strategic action plan for this year, so we're coming to you with item 5A, adoption of a city fleet electrification plan. And this one, I'll go through a little bit of the plan, it's fairly substantial, and talk a little bit about our process and answer questions at the end here. So, this plan is the culmination of about 16 months of efforts here with the internal city department. This plan, I will say, is focused on implementation. We call it the fleet electrification or for vehicles and equipment master plan, but there is a lot of implementation within this plan. And the reason for that is very specific. We have our marching orders. We have direction from city council through the sustainability goals for electrifying transportation with targets for 2030, 20% to the community, and for 2050, 100% of the community. And we also have orders through the Go EV resolution that city council adopted in 2020 that gives us a stronger target for the municipal operations. 100% of our fleet needs to be electrified by 2030. So, this plan kind of outlines how we're going to get there and what we're going to do to show and demonstrate to the public how we're making those kinds of decisions. So, a little bit more about what is contained within this plan. It's 14 divisions, I shouldn't, thank you. I should do this. Let's see. Okay, 14 divisions participated in this. We did a comprehensive vehicle inventory, and honestly, our fleet division already does a really good job of maintaining an inventory before this, but our inventory has 121 vehicles in there. We probably have another 100 trailers and different pieces of equipment that aren't motorized. We also have close to 200 pieces of gas-powered or combustion engine equipment that we are going to include as part of this plan. That's another aspect of where this plan might be a little bit more unique. Other cities have a master plan or inventory vehicles only. We are also including all gas-powered combustion engine equipment in this plan for electrification. So, again, this plan rolls up to the 100% electrification goal, and it's the first time that we've had this kind of a plan. A little bit more of our inventory, we are very focused and heavy into pickup trucks. It's a majority of our fleet. We do have that off-road duties that we have a lot around town, whether it might be water mains that we're fixing off-road or street repairs or up in the mountains at any of the three city reservoirs. The light duty and medium duty pickup trucks are a majority, and they are our workhorse of our fleet, followed quickly by heavy equipment, loaders, bigger vehicles, things like that, and SUVs. SUVs are a big component of the police department, and then very, very small portion are cars and motorcycles here. So, that's the inventory. Our equipment, so those close to 200 pieces, mostly coming from the golf course. Fossil Trace has, as you can imagine, are heavy on the lawn mowing equipment and lots of trimmers, blowers, edgers, bigger mowers, workmen kind of vehicles that are transporting materials. And we have some equipment in our parks and forestry departments as well. There isn't a department that doesn't have some of these kinds of equipment, so we have that. And then part of this plan is also to outline how we're going to assess our buildings and install charging infrastructure for new equipment. So, what we have in here is a couple of initial short-term efforts to install a couple of chargers that we already had in the works, planning to do this year, next year, and then a larger assessment effort next year in 2023 to look at our city buildings, look at where these vehicles are stored overnight. And it isn't as simple as just looking at, do we have the capacity? Can we store these vehicles? It's looking at our electrical panels, it's looking at time of use rates, it's looking at whether or not new consumption bumps up our demand and puts us into new rate categories. So, there is a bit of work to go into that. It's not complete as part of this plan, but we have a deadline of next year as well. And there's some resources that go with that. Excel Energy has some programs that we can take advantage of to help us with technical assistance and assessing our needs for that. We also have some preparation to do with the capital improvement plan and planning for the bulk of those installations for charging stations. So then, another unique aspect of this plan is a custom decision-making matrix. To be honest, this has probably been the part that we've discussed internally the most is how are we going to make decisions about new vehicles? The technology is changing quite often, and this is meant to be kind of an active influx process. So, what we have in the packet is an example of where that decision-making matrix is, has come so far. It includes things that are like fuel economy, cost of carbon, cost of vehicle maintenance, it's meant to include total cost of ownership. And we rely on industry sources that are vetted through the Department of Energy, through the EPA for evaluating some of those items. So, this decision-making matrix ties back to those sources. It also helps us pair existing vehicles with electric equivalents. So, we do have another group called the Electrification Coalition, and they help us look at our existing VIN numbers and then pair that up with what's on the market today. And of course, not all of our VIN numbers and those vehicles have an equivalent that's available right now. So, we do anticipate changes with this decision-making matrix. It's going to evolve over the next couple of years, and it's because technology is changing. The way we make assessments about these vehicles is changing, and we need to kind of be able to adapt and reflect to that and have it reflect to that. One of the key components of this decision-making matrix, though, is that it is intended to be transparent and open to the public. And our process that we're including in this is to publish this every summer with a list of anticipated upcoming vehicles that are scheduled for replacement and what those vehicle replacements will be, and have an opportunity for city staff, for the community Sustainability Advisory Board, for the public to take a look at how we are making those decisions and what we're able to do and what we're not able to do sometimes based on the market. So, that's part of that as well. The plan also includes a section for funding. It mentions grants that are available. We've been successful at obtaining some grants for public charging stations, so we do expect that there's going to be opportunities for vehicles as well as charging stations for the fleet as well. Let's see. So, what's coming up next? Our most immediate steps that are already in place is that our fleet division has pre-ordered four new vehicles, two hybrid police interceptors. Those are the models that our internal group had a field site visit with the Nevada Police Department, similar model, took a look at the performance, asked their staff how it goes, asked their fleet mechanics how they are to operate with, and came to the conclusion that they're interested in trying out two of those. We also have an order, two of the Ford F-150 Lightning fully-electric trucks, and honestly, they're probably, we're highly anticipating and awaiting those to arrive. They've been on back order for more than a year, so we're not quite sure when they're going to come in. But because our fleet is heavy on pickup trucks, we have a lot of expectation for these vehicles that could serve as probably the biggest potential in our future to achieve that goal. And then also, we've got some one-off innovative ideas coming up. There is an Excel Energy pilot program that we will apply for. That pilot program provides for the free use of an electric garbage collection truck. It provides for the free installation of a fast DC charger. That's something that we would be interested in hosting, and Excel would pay for that and we would keep that charger. We're working with our residential hauler to see if they would be willing to use this electric garbage truck. And what it looks like is, our hauler is, has been trying out electric garbage trucks for a while, and it's possible that we could get one that they've already kind of vetted and that would be able to be used around town. So, we're looking into that as well. And then, further, further things, as I said, we're refining the decision-making matrix. We'll install a handful of chargers coming up, look at grants. And then next year, we're really focused on that total assessment of the city buildings for additional charging stations. We'll evaluate the performance of these initial vehicles that are, that are coming into our inventory. And then next year also, as part of this larger plan, we're starting on the community EV master plan. So, that's also part of that Go EV commitment that council adopted two years ago. And honestly, that is probably the plan that will have a little bit more of the overarching goals to talk about the benefits of EV ownership. There's some gains to be had in this plan as a demonstration to the community and our actions in committing to the goals, but that overall community plan too will have more of reasons why EV ownership is important and, you know, trying to drive that ownership so that we can meet more of our electrification goals, because the public will need to be our partners in that effort as well. So, I think that's all I have. Let's see if I have anything else? No, questions? And it's a lot packed into this short presentation, so I'm leaving out quite a bit. Feel free to ask.
Thank you. Yeah, the plan is lengthy and the packet, great information. Counselor Fisher?
Thanks. I think the most important question is, how do they recreate that really loud blistering diesel noise of the trash trucks that alerts me that I have to give my trash out? So, this is great, thank you so much. I've been eagerly anticipating this for a couple of years. It was very exciting when we passed it a couple of years ago, so really love seeing this. I like the focus on the implementation. You know, I kind of want to remind the community of the value and the reason we're doing this isn't simply to demonstrate that electrification saves money, although it does, which is probably not that surprising, but I'm curious about, you know, your sense on this implementation side. At what point are we going to start to really see each department be able to have to put in a form that says, "We evaluated this, we're going with our giant, you know, F-650, you know, diesel engine instead of an electric because," so that the community can say, "Oh, hey," and maybe weigh in, or the rest of us can weigh in every year and see. When does that sort of kick in?
So, the calendar year is when we purchase vehicles. January 1 is when, you know, the year before council approves the budget. January 1 is when we order vehicles. They can come in anytime during that year. Sometimes we don't have control over that based on, you know, the inventory and the supply chain, but every summer, and we will experiment with this this year, is looking at the vehicles that are coming up on the vehicle replacement schedule for next year and using that industry information, the Department of Energy, and seeing what kind of equivalent electric vehicles are matched with that. So, this year might be an experimental year to try and report that and publish that since we're just kind of completing this. But then, our intention is that every summer between June and August, we publish, here are the vehicles that we intend to purchase in the next calendar year, here are the equivalents, and here's why we made these decisions. There will be some that don't have a match, and we'll have to justify why and publish that.
Awesome, thank you. That's great.
Counselor Hayes.
So, I have a bit of a public safety concern. So, you talked about fast recharge. So, I'm hoping that we can eye on how fast you recharge a fire truck, because you use one and you don't know when the next time you're going to use it, it's, it could be 10 minutes later. So, I'm, do we have data on that or are we going to keep gathering data on fire trucks?
Absolutely. The sector that doesn't have opportunity as the most is the large vehicles. And so, you know, we don't know where electric fire trucks are necessarily going to go. Things are coming along, but what we won't be doing is... Things are coming along, but what we won't be doing is asking council to fund three electric fire trucks that are doing the job of one, single one, today. You know, so we need to evaluate performance and making sure that we're able to do the jobs that we're currently doing and kind of evaluate those costs. So we have been keeping tabs on the market and technology. We'll continue to do so, and as things become more realistic for meeting our performance's needs, then we'll take a look at it.
I think the F-150s are really cool, and I know there are a lot of employees that we look forward to that. I think we all ought to also be keeping track on reliability statistics from Ford Motor Company to be sure that, because by the time we get a few more, there should be some pretty robust reliability figures. So I, you know, and I think on council, I'd like to see those, you know, it doesn't have to be a council item, but it could be a report that we get occasionally on electric vehicle reliability, because we count on those. There's also the question about the electric grid. We've seen in Texas a year ago during particularly, I think it was winter, when their grid went down, and the state was partially blacked out. That's the whole state. So it can happen, whether it's weather-related or other factors. Will we have generators for our EV recharging?
I think what we're going to be looking at is battery storage in the next couple of years. So I don't know that we would have gas generators as a backup to our electricity, but the redundancy and the independence of our electrical grid energy is important to this effort. It's important to the community. So we will be looking into battery storage for things like this. The city shops area is net zero. It's got 260 kilowatts of solar. It's hard to see, and I put that in the previous, so that picture, nobody often sees it unless you're looking at the carports maybe, but those buildings have a ton of solar on top of it. Adding electric charging to our consumption at this facility is going to knock us out of that net-zero status, but we will reevaluate for additional solar. But I think storage is kind of key to your point there.
Okay.
We'll take a look.
I'd like to keep an eye on that, too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. It's a lot of work again from our sustainability working group and from you, and it's really exciting to see a way for us to get to our plan, our goal, our plan to get to our goals. This is just me planting a seed publicly, not a directive, but I'm coming here to someone say, "Electric vehicles." I want to sort of echo and say, "Electric bikes." They're great, too. There's a lot of really great trends around e-cargo bikes coming, and not only does that help reduce congestion, it also helps with parking needs. So I'll just, you know, plant that seed, not a directive. Thanks.
Thank you.
Council Cameron.
Yes, thank you. I enjoyed reading this, and I did dive into the weeds a little bit, so I've got a couple comments and questions. I guess when you look at the decision-making matrix, I'm worried that we're going to have perfection be the enemy of the good, that you need to get, you know, down into what carbon benefit there's going to be. And since the decision's already been made to electrify, to me, the decision-making matrix should stop probably at the performance line and all the fuel economy and all the other stuff, while it's important, maybe after the fact in terms of what benefits are we gaining, what differences are we seeing. The decision to move to electric, in my mind, has already been made, so I wouldn't, and this is something that council also can weigh in on, but if we come down to, you know, a few thousands of dollars difference between something that's in the $70,000 range, I don't want us to decide to go with the gas vehicle because, you know, it lost on that. Because a lot of these numbers are kind of made up ultimately, right? You're predicting the reliability of a car, for example. So I would want the performance line to be our decision matrix, because anything to go beyond that is kind of made up. And I don't think it's in our benefit to ask staff to pull that data together down to every vehicle level. It's just too much. So that's a thought. The other one was, I would hope that this database gets to be on a shared drive, is internally accessible by a lot of people, and maybe gets down to specific pieces of equipment. I'm a little concerned that, you know, one month you might say you have 10 weed trimmers, and the next month it's like, "Well, that was that one, and this is this one." And sort of like, there's no exact relationship between the equipment, mostly it's equipment, not the vehicles, and an actual line in the sheet. So I gained some comfort if that had a little bit more detail, so we knew what we were actually swapping out. So that's, again, down in the noise, but it's stuff I picked up on. Oh, and one more thing about batteries. Given that Colorado School of Mines did a great job of evaluating, like, several sites for, you know, PV, I'm thinking that their next big project would be battery storage and reuse. You included a link that said that batteries that have already reached their end of life for a vehicle still might have 70% of their capacity. So maybe Golden, with Enrell nearby and Mines nearby, could be the leader in what battery backup looks like and in battery reuse. I think that would be really sweet.
Okay.
I'm going to just tag on to that second point. I had noticed in here, oh, it says 1F. I don't know, 1F of what? 1F of the recommendations to develop a plan to maintain an inventory and schedule of replacement of gas-powered equipment. And it has a target date of, I think, 2023. So my takeaway from that is that this project did sort of an inventory of just gathered a list, but that we still need to develop a plan to formalize that on an ongoing basis so that what was done was more of an ad hoc just for this effort. Is that with the plan?
I think, so to answer your question, yes. There's a lot of pieces of equipment, and pieces of equipment kind of come and go faster than vehicles. And so we're kind of looking them as a category of equipment. And if there is an electric equivalent that can replace all of the chainsaws, we would probably do them all. So it would be, I understand Council Cameron's point about adding specificity in there. It's also intended to be one fell swoop when we find the ideal equivalence. So to some extent, they're smaller pieces, but I think I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other? No? This is a resolution. Are we ready for a motion?
Sure. I move to approve resolution number 2871.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion, then, council?
Do we have the opportunity to add findings like, it was also mentioned that electric bikes could be added, and it was...
It's on the record.
It's on the record. Okay.
But, yeah, if you'd like to put anything else on the record, now's the time.
Just that the resolution maybe reference the comments as made by councillors to inform the plan moving forward. I don't know. I mean, otherwise, it was just, you know, it is what it is. I don't know. I guess I'd like to see the plan be responsive to discussion.
Other comments? I am really excited to have this. I know it's been in the works for a while. I know we've talked about it over the years. And while I think council in the past has given direction to the city in adopting goals that this is where we want to go, to have a document, to have a plan that's the roadmap of how we're going to get there, is really exciting, because that's what's going to do it, rather than just talking about it, but actually understanding how it's going to happen. So I'm really glad, really appreciate the Sustainability Board for all of their work through this process with you. I know they've had a lot of time and input on it as well.
And I just want to comment, I thought it looked great. I really appreciate all the work that's kind of do it, and I kind of like the flexible approach. I saw how that was built into the resolution there, a little bit to Councilor Cameron's point about remaining flexible to the needs and continue to review and analyze, and I thought that was important. And I just want to piggyback on councillor, Mayor Portem Trout's comment, too. I had that same thought about bikes and other vehicles and devices, mainly because in the United States, right, more electric bikes are being sold right now than electric cars, and that's a really good thing. Not only are they cheaper, but they're increasingly able to do a lot of that same work, and I certainly don't want to suggest that, you know, a lot of the work that goes on, you know, needs a truck. That's true. But there's a lot that I think can be done in other vehicles that are smaller, cheaper, and need a whole lot less electricity to charge and reduces that footprint as well. So I just, I hope you'll keep looking at those things as well as you move forward.
Yes, thank you.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the resolution carries.
Thank you.
And you are here for the next item, and that's community solar partnership.
Hey, guys.
Oh?
We're good.
Sounds good. Thank you, mayor, and council again. This is another item on council's strategic action plan, item 4A, community solar garden partnership. So I'll talk a little bit about the bids and the next steps in the process, but what I wanted to express for the folks that might be listening up there, and just a real quick review of where we're at, we have a lot of history and a lot of background to this. We started work on this in 2008. Our website has a lot of that history. So I would encourage folks to go to cityofgolden.net/community-solar. It's got a lot of the actions, it's got a lot of the resolutions that we've adopted, the guiding principles that have been adopted by the city council, and some of the analysis that we've done to date. So that part, I'm not necessarily going to rehash here tonight. We're going to start by saying that we are about midpoint through a process to develop a community solar project. Tonight is really about discussion of the RFP and next steps towards potentially selecting a developer as a partner to the city for a project. So just to quickly recap, community solar is based on a subscriber model in which members subscribe to receiving energy of the power generated in exchange for kind of a monthly subscription fee. And these are voluntary programs that allow participants to kind of enjoy those perks of solar power without the large initial investment at their homes or businesses. So the reasons why the city needs a solar garden, just to kind of recap, is we have lots of folks that cannot take advantage of investing in renewable energy today. These might be homeowners that have roofs that aren't oriented to the south or can't capture that solar gain. A big section of our population are renters or low-income folks that might not be able to invest in their own solar business tenants that don't own their building. And, you know, honestly, the city municipal organization might benefit from being a subscriber and paying into a renewable energy project instead of paying into an Excel Energy bill. But more recently, also, this is an option for new development in Golden. In 2019, we changed the municipal code to require large-scale multifamily and commercial properties to install solar as a requirement. So that's not a part that's optional as part of the sustainability menu. Those projects, new developments, have to install a minimum of 10% of their estimated forecasted energy consumption on-site. So as we saw in some recent projects like Coors Tech, we have large projects that sometimes don't have enough rooftop space, sometimes maybe not even for 10%. And so a community solar garden gives new development another option to pay into to offset that energy consumption. It might be an upfront, one-time cost or a cash-in-lieu payment, but solar gardens offer that subscription to new development as well. So let's see here. So where are we going to put a community solar site? We're probably up to about 20 sites that we've evaluated over the last decade. We've settled on three main opportunities. The original opportunity that you're more familiar with is the Rooney Road Old Landfill Site. The city has a current lease agreement with Jefferson County. The Golden voters voted to allow renewable energy uses at that landfill site several years ago by ballot initiative, by a ballot vote, and that has traditionally been the one that we've looked at. Because of some discussions and maybe the parcel being a little bit more in limbo, that's more of a, has become more of a research site for us. That could yield a potential partnership with Jefferson County, and we're continuing to do that research, and we would like to pursue that with a solar garden developer. Two other sites that have risen to a more likely chance of being developed for us, one is a pretty small site. It's 100 kilowatts. It's on a detention, a retention pond up on Cadmont Drive, across from the city shops. 100 kilowatts is pretty small, 10 homes or a little bit more than that that would provide energy for. But we think that that site has potential in filling a need in the Golden community, possibly for historic buildings. That site, in producing the kilowatt hours over a year, could facilitate and provide the energy needs for most of our designated historic buildings in Golden, including the Astor House, the Foothills Museum, Foothills Art Museum, the Brickyard House here. So that is one option. It's not probably the primary option for developing a solar garden, but that might be the potential for that one. So the big one here is 56th Avenue. The city has 80 acres under a lease agreement with the state land board. We've had Colorado School of Mines student group look at the potential for this site and give us an opinion. We've met with Excel Energy representatives and come to a general conclusion that the initial opportunity here is 10 megawatts. That's pretty huge for us. It's about 9% of the total community needs here, so it really represents a good opportunity. And these are all items that were in the RFP. So in April, we issued the request for proposals and asked for qualified solar garden developers to tell us what their experience is, to tell us about the projects that they've already done, and to include a fairly hefty list of criteria that we've adopted over the years. These reflect community values. They are things like putting priority towards low-income subscribers, making sure that this could be a subscription model that allows people to easily come in and go, to subscribe to small amounts that might just take the edge off of your summer consumption when the AC is on and it's pretty hot, and Excel has those different tiers in the summer, or, you know, provide needs for businesses and the rest of the community. So based on those criteria, we received four bids and four proposals. These are all on the city website that I had mentioned. They're quite extensive. And what we are looking for tonight is kind of a discussion and a little bit of feedback and any questions you might have of us to bring back information to you to be able to make a potential decision in selecting one of these companies as a partner. What we don't have right now is a subscription model to show, pricing to show necessarily of what people would pay in their subscriptions, but we're midpoint in this process and through, after this process, and if we enter into a partnership as the next step, that partner will help us develop a site plan for one or more of these sites, and then a program design that will give us that information about what would subscribers pay, what could be the opportunities for the city to subscribe into this program, what are opportunities that we might want to additionally invest in a community solar project to help offset costs to certain groups in the community. So those are all details to come later. This is rolling up into a late fall application to Excel Energy. All community solar garden projects are required to submit to Excel for approval, and Excel only awards a certain capacity every year. only awards a certain capacity every year. Last year, I think there was more than 250 applications for the capacity that they had. It sold out in seconds, probably. So our chances are fairly steep in order to be successful in this, but we can't do it without a partner. And that community solar garden partnership is kind of our next step. Contract and construction come later after that. So again, this is not a point at which we are asking you to devote funds or approve site plans. Oh, that video didn't work. That's okay. That was a flyover. It's not, it's not really a black box.
It worked when you were talking.
Oh, it did, okay. It went, okay. So that was one of the Colorado School of Mines, kind of just assessments of one of the gardens. So I added this in here because we're getting a lot of questions, and I think it's important to the board to talk to the community about what they could expect. What could potential customers expect here? And there really are a couple of different ways to subscribe, based on the models that are already out there, based on some of the gardens that these developers who have submitted bids have already offered. One is kind of an upfront buy-in to a community solar garden. It's an upfront cost, fairly steep, it's a one-time cost, and then you don't have to pay into the garden later. So it's kind of like purchasing the car with cash and you're done. Another option is kind of a static price over time, and that price is higher than initial current rates, but you get that guaranteed price for the length of your term. And if you would like to commit to a 10-year term, a 20-year term, that is your price. And you hedge your bets that the Excel Energy prices are going to be higher, and you're going to come out ahead as a net. Another model is that there's a predictable escalating price, and it's a set percentage that is increasing every year, every couple of years. But again, you're hedging your bets that Excel's prices are going to go up quicker than what the prices are that you're committing to as part of the subscription. And the last line on this graph is really, you know, where Excel prices could go. And so it's just, it's just an example of Excel prices are going up and they're hard to predict, but the benefit of investing in a solar garden is that you can buy into the renewable energy and have that access to renewable energy potentially at a price that is equal to or lower than what you're currently paying. So again, what will this cost the city? There will be some options coming up in the next couple of months. One is nothing. And when I say nothing, I mean a little bit of amount that is already included in the sustainability budget for some analysis and to pursue the feasibility of this project. If we do nothing, there could be an option here where we hand this land lease off to a solar garden developer to, you know, completely run and organize. That is an option. The second option is really kind of minimal participation. The city organization might be a subscriber to the energy. Those funds are already provided for in the city's operating budgets. We would shift payment, instead of writing a check to Excel, we write a check to the solar garden. A third option is looking at subsidies to certain portions of our community. The city may wish to subsidize on a greater basis low-income folks or give incentives to specific parts of the community. We will quantify that once we start into program development. And then a fourth option, quite expensive, consider potentially owning and running the entire garden. And that usually looks like a partnership initially with a solar garden developer with the ability to purchase over time and end up with ownership. So we'll bring you those options later. For now, we've got those four bids, and within the memo here, we've got some evaluations started. We do look at the experience from the criteria that's listed in the RFP. We look at how many community solar projects these companies have already done, whether they're in Colorado or not. We also look at the reliability and their ability to serve subscribers and run a customer, a customer program, their relationship with the utility, Excel Energy, and their experience with that. So we've got some evaluation in the memo itself. The Community Sustainability Advisory Board is scheduled to review these bids also at their regular meeting, which happens to be tomorrow. So I would expect that they would give you a recommendation over the next couple of weeks. So tonight, what we're looking for is any questions you might have that you want to see us return with, any comments you might have about the bids that you might have seen. And we'll return August 23 with some recommendations from the board, further evaluation, and what we're, what we're looking for on the 23rd is if there's an inclination to, you know, a direction towards a partnership with one of these firms. So I think I talked about the web resources, so I didn't talk much about the actual bids themselves. There's some evaluation that's in the memo, and there's some probably inclination towards a few of those groups. There's at least two, two of the bids were very knowledgeable about their projects that they have around the state, around the region, qualified solar garden developers. And then I would suggest that there's probably two other ones that have a little bit less experience than what we're looking for. So that's kind of a first blush from a staff point of view. And that's about all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Counsel, questions? Any, if not questions, comments you want to provide back?
Questions?
Oh, question, let's start with question, Mayor Portem.
Thanks. I guess a comment, not a question?
Yeah, the question. Okay. Teresa, again, thank you so much for all this effort and the Sustainability Advisory Board, and so we have Ken, our previous board chair, back there. Thanks for all your effort. There was, I think, one main point that Ken was bringing up is just to ask that whoever we choose really makes sure that they start with a business model. Were you able to read that feedback and comment? Did you have any thoughts about that feedback and comment?
Yes, I think we, I mean, we have probably higher expectations than traditional community solar gardens for the business model itself. So we've got some indications that a few of the companies are willing to work with that model. I would suggest that there's been a predominance of developers that have kind of wanted to subscribe the program and then let it run. We don't want that. We want a very flexible and active model. So there's a couple of companies in there that seem to indicate in their proposals that they would be willing to work with our things. Where this really comes out, though, is in the actual site design and the program design. And if Council isn't comfortable with it, if the board's not comfortable with it, then there isn't going forward with that. So it has to meet our needs, I would say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel Hesman, then Counsel Reed.
So the question is, are you really, because I look at the evaluations you've done, and one of your comments in the recommendation is for us to perhaps give guidance on which one we might think to pick, and I would say, do you really want us to do that ahead of, I don't think you did, okay, I just wanted to check that, that we would be listening carefully to what CSAB recommends to us? And second of all, in terms of negotiating whichever one we determine to go forward with, I don't think they should start cheering and carrying, we'd like to be sure that's a successful negotiation and have a backup go someplace else if it didn't work. Is that, I assume that that's the method you would follow?
Absolutely. I think our schedule builds in some of those protections that if this proposal, if a proposal that is crafted by any one of these developers doesn't meet the city's needs, we're not, we're in a position of authority to not allow it to move forward to Excel Energy. So I think there is incentive there for a solar garden developer to meet what the city is looking for. We're controlling the land lease on the property, so we're in a good position there.
Counsel Reed?
Thanks. So one concern I have in all of this is two of the primary sites that you've identified are lease sites, and that creates uncertainty for the potential developers. What are the terms of those leases?
Thank you. So, you know, if I can put aside the Rooney site for now, I think that one, we are just looking at research at this point. If that one moved forward, it really needs to be more of a partnership with the county as well. The county is the landowner, it's a closed landfill, they have obligations to maintain that landfill cap, and so there comes certain requirements for a mutual partnership there. But for the state land board leased area, this is an area that the state land board acknowledges could be used for renewable energy production. They actually have a process where our current planning lease, we're in a, we're in a multi-year initial phase. The planning lease allows us to look at the feasibility and assess the project and really kind of look at a proposal for this. If we move forward and talk with the state land board, we may enter into a negotiation for a production lease. And their production lease program is based on a deal where they, their land lease rates are directly tied to production of the system. So it's not as simple as it used to be about 10 years ago, where you'd spend $500 an acre in land lease costs and seal the deal. They would like a cut, and their revenues for the leasing are based on the production of the, of the project. Now that said, the state has indicated that they would be interested in potentially being a subscriber as well. They occupy a large building down here on 12th, and they are interested in offsetting that energies for their offices there. So there could be a negotiation point here where perhaps the land lease terms and the financial lease amount would be offset by their subscription into this project. So there is a little bit of an extra layer of negotiation there, but I believe that the state land board has set this up for an energy production activity on this property.
So in terms of our, before we get final pricing in the negotiation, presumably we can have a, at least a minimum lease term where we can tell the developer they can count on 25 years to amortize the cost?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we do have some examples we can draw from with other state land board leases that are for solar production.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Counsel Ken?
Yeah, I had a follow-up sort of around amortization, too, actually. I was thinking that the cost of money is such in the way these developments happen that any of these that we choose would probably want to get their pay back within about seven or but under 10 years. And therefore, the extra years on there are really just gravy. And so I'm wondering about this bottom line that says it'll cost the city, you know, $3 signs if we lease or have future ownership. I think that I would, I would ask, could we structure something where they get paid back upfront, you know, in the few seven years, but then we actually get ownership and a better income stream later without bringing money to the table? So I'm wondering if that model might exist.
I think we could ask about that model, absolutely. We've commissioned and engaged an economic consultant previous to this that has run a couple of different ownership models, one being that we have an early payoff. Typically, six years is the depreciation amount that the developer can take advantage of, and then they're kind of done, right? They've got tax appetite from their investors, but once they've kind of completed that, then there is an opportunity. So we'll ask about that model. I think it's, it's very likely we can get some options for Counsel to consider for either early purchase, no purchase, you know, everything in between.
And one quick follow-up about local suppliers, solar installers, and those kinds of people. There was an attempt in the decision-making matrix to, you know, favor in-state, but my impression is that these companies are really kind of based out-of-state, they might have a local presence. Is there going to be any, at least asked of trying to make use of local solar installers to be able to help build it and, you know, maybe have some of that revenue flow back through the city?
Yes, it was certainly a component of when we built the 650 kilowatts of solar on nine city buildings back in 14 and 15, that there was a preference to use local installers. So I think we'll pursue that with the partnership. Scale is going to be a little bit different when we're looking at, you know, either 56th Avenue is, you know, 22,000 panels. And so whether or not a solar, a local installer could have a chunk or, you know, a significant portion of that, I do think we want to support the local, the local community, the local installers that we have, so we'll build that into it. And that's been part of some of our past decision-making, that is a priority.
Thank you.
Counsel Hesman.
So, you know, when you look at the progress over the past several years, we've, you know, it's, we've had some difficulty, you know, getting to where we are. Are all of these sites now ready to go forward if we pick one or two? Are they ready? Is there more TBDs or question marks?
I would suggest that when we get to a point where site design is done, program design is done, and we are, you all are happy with it, that is a, that is a decision point that we would be kind of ready to go or no-go. What then we will be subject to is whether or not Excel accepts a bid during that annual limited-time offering for community solar. And what happens if they don't accept us in this year is that we would be queued up for next year, either with a similar partnership, same partnership, you know, though slightly different terms.
My question really focuses on, let's pick one, let's say Rooney Road, that's had some fits and starts. Are we now ready to proceed, if we choose to, with that site?
Not Rooney. Rooney needs additional conversation with the Board of County Commissioners and the Jeffco staff.
So which sites are ready now for us to proceed with?
The other two have the better chance at development sooner. So the 100-kilowatt garden could be done anytime throughout the year. We don't have to wait. That is falling under what's called the Excel standard offering. It's such a small system, we can do that anytime. The large system, though, we, it's, it would be ready to go if we had a partner and a design, and then Excel would say yes, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I know you mentioned that the, it's, I think you said Q4 this year that Excel does that, and is it a pretty quick turnaround of decision-making, or when would we know if our project could go forward?
That's a good question. I wish I had very concrete things to tell you here. What is not known is the criteria of which, how they'll evaluate it. What is not known is the window of opportunity because the POC needs to bless the 2021 Renewable Energy Standard Plan. So we, we don't currently know the timing, we don't currently know, and nobody knows the criteria of which they are going to be evaluated against this year. They've got kind of an odd process that looks at, here's all of the gardens that have submitted, and then they evaluate for criteria. So we don't effectively, we can't even strategize to kind of load up an application with all of the good stuff. So I'm sorry, I don't have any better information about it.
So what you're telling me is, like, during our budget process of this year, we wouldn't really know if we could go forward with anything next year in regards to solar gardening? Because if Excel says you're not on the list, then we would just be waiting for the following year?
I think we'll know by the end of the year. And so what, what we have probably already accommodated for is if the city municipal organization wanted to be a subscriber, we use our operating budget, and we just shift it from paying Excel to paying a developer. What we wouldn't necessarily know until the end of the year is, what we could, we could kind of predict with the partnership in developing the program details is what is the city's opportunity to either incentivize or buy down the costs or participate on a higher basis? What we definitely don't have money for is purchase it outright this year or next year.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, direction to the Sustainability Board for their conversation tomorrow? Anything else you need from us?
No, but please send me any questions that you might have in the next week or two, and we'll come back to you with some options. Thank you.
This is also exciting. We can talk about solar gardens for a while, so it's great to see this progress. Next. Next up, we have several ordinances and public hearings. The first is ordinance 2193, and Mr. Glick is coming up, and we have talked about this one in the past meetings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I was back there thinking that tonight is a good example of some of the range of things that council is asked to consider, that these previous items, as well as some later on, relate to strategic efforts that council has identified for the benefit of the community and things that we need your policy direction on. The next three items are actually things that are in front of you because the, between the municipal code and the charter, these are powers reserved unto council. Only council can, in this case, convey any real estate interest in property, whether it's an easement or conveying a property. And so it doesn't matter how big or small it is, or how significant or frankly insignificant it is, council is the only one who can make this decision, and that is one of the main reasons that it's in front of you. We did have, you have talked about this a few times already, most recently in March of this year, before that in the spring of 2021. And over the years and decades, we've talked about the Welch ditch and the anomalies of the areas that are through Kenny's addition plat north of 19th Street and the areas to the south, and how the rights that the ditch company had very much appear to be different in different areas, and how their rights were created in the 1870s, and then subsequently how whatever rights they had from South Golden Road to north of 16th Street, they conveyed to the city in 2004. So there's lots of background that you've seen before. This particular issue at 408 18th Street actually, I keep telling you this, I've never seen this before. So I hadn't seen the two errors on Lookout Mountain that we had to fix in 2017 and a few weeks ago. And I've not seen this one where through most of the lots north of 19th Street, the ditch is kind of on the edge of a lot, and therefore it went through a platted lot. It is most likely an easement right that the ditch company had and that we received, and it was never really, was never separated out. This particular property, if you look at Exhibit 1 to the ordinance, which is the same thing as Exhibit A to the quitclaim deed and easement, because it went right smack through the middle of this Lot 11 Block K of Kenny's addition, for reasons that I can't predict or recreate, instead of drawing their property lines, the folks in lots 10 and 12 who each owned one and a third lot, basically, instead of drawing them down the middle of the creek, they just excluded the creek, it's not the creek, I'm sorry, the ditch, without any legal description. So this truly is the only time I've seen this in all of our dealings with the ditch company. And it created a problem. It created a problem for the two neighbors because they have no idea where their property line really is. So they've been wanting to fix this, and it's essentially the folks in, the downhill folks, the folks who owned Lot 10 and the portion of Lot 11 west of the ditch, who have been trying to clear this up for a number of years. What we brought you back in 2021 was the options, and then with Ms. Kuckenberg again in March of this year, that you might be able to accomplish it in a couple of ways. But the property owners who are here were really hoping that we would consider this to be pretty insignificant and that we would be willing to convey by quitclaim deed, which in our real estate discussions, we always talk about the fact that by this type of an instrument, you are conveying whatever rights you have without actually warranting that you have any rights to the property. You're conveying whatever we have but retaining an easement. So in March of this year, this is the direction that council had given thumbs up to proceed with as opposed to license agreement. You did mention, should there be some compensation, because we were talking about one of the Lookout Mountain errors at the same time. And so I, it took a while to both get the documents ready and to meet the property owner's schedule. But we are here tonight with an ordinance that if enacted would authorize the quitclaim deed and retention of the easement to Mr. Johnson and Ms. Sanders, who are here, and they have spoken before you, with a, for a compensation of $6,600 for this highly encumbered parcel that we, there's a pretty good chance we own it because of the way it was abandoned by the two neighbors and that Welch, the Golden Canal and Reservoir Company did own it. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet money on the fact that we own it, but there's a pretty good chance. But this would help clean it up. And it really is much more of a cleaning up a problem benefit to Mr. Johnson, Ms. Sanders, than it is an economic benefit to them. As it is, it is a problem with the easement. Our rights are more defined and their rights are somewhat more defined, as long as some third party doesn't come back and do a quiet title action and claim that they own it in the future. But, so this is not the most significant real estate conveyance that you've ever been asked to consider, but the charter says only you can do it, and we bring it to you tonight. They are here to ask your support and to answer any questions, and I am here to answer questions. And there is a public hearing scheduled in case anyone else has input to you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Glick?
Yeah, I have a question about Exhibit 1 on the note. Well, just maybe it's, comes down to this. Is this transferring title, or since we don't know if we own it, it's not transferring title? Because Exhibit says this is not a land survey and not to be used to transfer title. And I'm just concerned that the Exhibit is trying to, has wiggle rim.
I don't know the answer to that question. The legal description was prepared by Flatiron's survey for the intention of describing this strip of property that is defined on the uphill side by some old brickwork and on the downhill side by a retaining wall, which is what our surveyor indicated. When you don't know the width of an irrigation ditch, you define it based on that. That note is typical. You see it on surveys all the time. But I don't have an answer to you if that affects the ordinance or the conveyance in any way.
Thank you.
Yes?
Trying not to step out of line here, but the legal description has something to do with the type of survey or survey work that was obtained. So it may or may not be valid, but because we're being asked to sign a quitclaim deed, it probably does not matter. It's, there is a legal description attached to the proposed deed, and we would be conveying whatever we have under that legal description. So as Steve pointed out, there are a lot of errors in this. I could pontificate a lot based upon my experience on who actually owns this and who could actually claim to own this. But that's not our charge tonight. My question for you, Steve, is the owners of 408 18th Street have represented that they have tried to reach out to the owners of the neighboring property that could be affected by this. Has anybody on city staff reached out to the owners on the uphill side?
Not to my knowledge. We have been on public record with this issue, and part of the issue where I am not concerned about that is the topography, that the, what the neighbors act like they own is several feet up the hill from the east side of this legal description. So they, in essence, benefit from this action because it would help argue that they own the hillside to the east side of what we've defined as the ditch parcel. But no. This has come up back in May of 21, and the conversation was because any action you take would be a publicly advertised action, that that would be noticed to them.
Well, I'm just concerned because we don't have a process. This is a fairly unique scenario. You know, I work by analogy because that's a lot of what law is. And the nearest analogy, as I've mentioned before, is if we were to vacate an alley, we provide, we have the neighbors all involved, is my recollection, that the neighbors have to sign off or consent or at least be notified. And to me, this is more analogous to an alley than anything else that we could possibly have. And it just concerns me that we haven't been involved in that process, so.
Yes, sir. And that was the conversation back a year and a half ago, and council had not directed that we directly contact them. I had been waiting to see if they ever contacted us, but we have not. You might ask Mr. Johnson or Ms. Sanders that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Thanks. Steve, the easement, I read it. I wonder if you could give me an example of something we might build over that easement, or whether that easement would restrict the owner from developing that portion of the property in some way, knowing that the city would potentially have the right to come in and ask for that to be removed?
Clearly, the biggest prohibition is a structure. There are sometimes fences allowed to go perpendicular across drainage easements, but sometimes not. But no building would be permitted in there, and no, basically, the thing that comes up the most is, can I pipe it? And the way that the easement is set up is you can't really do anything in the easement area without permission of the city engineer, Public Works Department. And in order to pipe it, you would generally have to prove that the pipe you put in is big enough to accommodate anticipated flows. But trees would be, and I, there was a section we put in there about landscaping, that in addition to not planting trees, for example, you, they would not be allowed to allow volunteer trees to grow up and impede the strip. That the strip needs to remain available for the conveyance of whatever waters get into it. And part of the management issue with the abandoned Welch ditch is it's rare that waters get into it. But we've, you know, we've seen in Colorado the 2013 floods, and we've seen that things can happen. So the obligation that we've assumed since 2004 is that the entire stretch, this particular stretch from South Golden Road to north of 16th Street, needs to be able to convey flows if such flows get into it. So no buildings, probably no fences perpendicular across it, and limitations on landscaping, and no filling it in, and only piping if city engineer approves the size of the pipe.
Okay, okay. And as an extension of that, you mentioned no buildings. Does this extend their property line and change where they can build otherwise on their property from where they currently can build?
Yes, because it defines, well, my opinion is yes. It defines a property line that has been undefined. Although the-
That would have been interesting with the planning department.
The amount that you can build is really the same. We have limitations on coverage, and whether you, it's one reason that I would argue it doesn't increase the value of the property is you can build a lot more behind the house than you can on this little area to the side of it, still maintaining the setback. The setback is measured, this zoning has five-foot side setback, but of course it would be measured from the easement line as opposed to five feet from an unknown property line. So in this case, the setback would be the 20-foot wide strip. They couldn't build into the, the setback is overridden by the easement. That's where that goes. And on your lot, you might have a, if you have a utility easement along the back, some of the flats in the 50s through 90s have utility easements on the side and the back, 10-foot on the back, but the setback might only be five feet. But you can't build five feet, you have to respect the easement. So it, more than anything, it clarifies it for them.
It doesn't necessarily expand their rights to be able to build structure, but it just makes it more-
Much more clarified.
Clarified, okay. All right.
Thank you. I have a follow-up to that, Steve, because I'm not quite sure I follow your analysis. The setback is from the lot line, but they can't build to the easement, but presumably they could build right up to the edge of the easement, provided they're not within the five-foot setback from the lot line?
That's what I tried to say, sir.
Okay. So in fact, if the house is not right up against the easement area, then they could build further to the, in this case, the east?
If the house isn't already closer to easement line.
Right. So it is, it is potentially, they could build further east, as long as they don't violate the easement.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hopefully that helped you.
And I think what Steve's also-
Not significantly, not significantly more.
I think, I think they already could do that, but this clarifies that they can do it. They could have already moved to the east, but this clarifies by how much they could-
To a lesser degree, potentially.
Potentially to a lesser degree.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Glick? No. Would you like to come up and?
Hello again, council. Ditches are certainly less exciting than solar gardens and electric vehicle fleets. I think you've heard our request ad nauseam at this point, so I won't go into too much detail. I did want to respond to Counselor Reed's concern. We had originally had a conversation with our neighbor, and we've had multiple conversations and multiple email chains where Steve has been included as well, sort of talking about what's possible. So it is not the case that the city has directly reached out to this person. We feel that this person has had ample opportunity to engage. In some of those conversations, they've also been clear that they're not interested in investing effort or money into this process, and we've invested quite a bit of both. So a unique situation perhaps, but that's how we have gone about engaging with our neighbor. Are there other questions council has that we could answer?
Thank you. Anybody have anything? Go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks for coming back yet again. Maybe you can help me understand or us understand the desire for the quitclaim deed as opposed to other mechanisms?
So there are a couple of reasons. First is that it, we would be interested in trying to do some improvements around the ditch, respecting the drainage easement and working with Public Works. And it's a little tricky if we're investing in something that we don't own. Our understanding is that a quitclaim would also allow us to get title insurance on the parcel, which means that if some dead relative emerged saying, no, actually, we own this portion of Lot 11, that it would provide some more protections that our understanding is that a license agreement would not. Other reasons for a quitclaim? It sort of keeps, gets the city out of it. You don't have to see us again in six months, as much as I'm sure you, you love having us come talk about ditches. It's sort of, as Mr. Glick said, cleans up the issue and absolves the city of some responsibility there.
Anyone else? Yes?
Maybe this will go back to Steve, but just to clarify, he said that the terms mean you can't have trees in it, and there's already trees in, they're maybe there, but also in other parts of the ditch that you don't control. So is it true then that you're promising to do something that other residents have not been held to account to do anyway? I mean, is that to the good?
I don't know if we can answer that.
Well, you're saying that you're going to keep trees out of it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I can't answer the fact that whether or not we're allowed to, we're being asked to do something other residents aren't being held accountable to, so.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. I can't speak to their particular situation.
Yep. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, this has a public hearing associated with it, and we can have further discussion after, but I am going to open the public hearing on ordinance 2193 and ask anybody who would like to speak on the matter to come up to the podium. And I'll close the public hearing. Council, are there any further questions, or are we ready for a motion? Counselor Fisher?
Thanks. One question. You'd mentioned that you felt this seemed unique, and yet I think maybe one concern would be that this opens up, council, to suddenly have a line of people at the door with strange ditches around town that are- at the door with strange ditches around town that are, that are coming to us. What's your sense for the likelihood of something like that happening?
The, the uncertainty of exact boundaries of the areas south of 19th and especially south of 20th Street, unless the city decided to take a, no, word it differently, if the city decided to take a very aggressive maintenance responsibility for the portion from South Golden Road to about 19th Street, that would clear up some issues for some folks and severely anger other folks in the area. Because to Counsel Cameron's question, there is very little maintenance that happens in much of it. And for the areas north of 19th Street, we basically don't pay much attention to the portions that goes through people's lots. So I don't anticipate this specific one, because we've done some research, but there are two types of issues. Some of the people in the area of Kenny's addition would like to fill it in, and they periodically are asking the city engineer for permission and saying, well, there's never any water in it, why won't you let me fill it in? And so that issue can come up. And then for the area to the south, over the years, we may have people wanting to quiet title that action, or that, those undefined strips that were excluded from flats. What's very clear about those is they were excluded from flats, so the adjacent property owners don't really have a claim to them. That if anyone, if the ditch company didn't own it, then the Bunzel family, for example, for Bunzel's addition, might try to come back and claim it. So other than, I won't be here that many more decades, and you can blame me, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. So it might, might be more likely if there was actually some flooding where water got into it, and suddenly the city got more interested in those as actual-
Right. And, you know, right after 2004, some of the cottonwoods started dying. Now the issues are more overgrowth and, sorry to say it this way, youth behavioral issues that we hear about in the areas closer to the Long Park and the high school.
Thanks for not naming my kids specifically, I appreciate that.
So I need to pivot and ask Ms. Guckenberg, there's a reference in the memo to your recommendation being a preference for a license agreement. Can you explain why you have that preference?
Well, it was an alternative recommendation. It's another strategy by which if Council wanted to permit the applicant residence here to, to have some, exercise some control over this segment of land without actually ceding property rights to the extent the city has them. A license agreement is the proper device to, or a device to do that, that retains the maximum control by the city over the land. And specifically, my concerns that gave rise to that suggestion are the drainage issues. And, you know, a licenses agreement, license agreements are revocable and not subject to the constraints of title and, and things of that nature, and you just retain maximum control. And I had great concerns, Mr. Glick tonight mentioned the 2013 floods. I saw what that wrought firsthand, and it rose vividly to mind when I looked at this. So that's just the alternative. It's a, it's a quick and easy device that, but does it, does it give the, the folks that are asking for it everything they want? Absolutely not.
Yeah, and I'm certainly not asking that question. I guess the question is, under this agreement, the city currently has presumably unfettered use of this area.
Correct.
Under the new agreement, we have a single use of this, potential use of this area.
Correct.
And there's no going back from that.
Correct. The license agreement's revocable, this is not.
Right. So if we give the quick claim deed, and it's discovered that there might be another use for this property that would be beneficial to the city, we can't reel this back in, is that correct?
Not unless they give it back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we take a motion? Anyone like to make a motion?
Move approval of ordinance 2193.
Seconded.
Council discussion.
Just following up with, so I guess I'll, I'll kick this off. I, I want to be very clear that when I sit on the dais, it's not who I like, it's the process. And the proponents in this case, Mr. Johnson and Dr. Johnson, and Ms. Sanders, I like very much. I just have problems with the process and with what the city is giving away, basically getting compensated only for the expenses that we've sunk into this. So we're, we're giving away the city asset effectively for no additional value to the city. We don't have a process in place. We're setting precedent, as we've seen with a request from another owner that feels like they were slighted by a single property decision that we made, claiming that that set precedent. And that just makes me exceedingly uncomfortable. I, I'm not going to get into my legal analysis of what the, whether this is conveying anything, or whether it's insurable, and what that really means, because there are some, some issues there. But in my experience, I will tell you, it is better to be the owner if an issue comes up, because you're just seen in a better light by the court. So if there is an issue with, if the city were to grant an easement, which is also an insurable property interest, as opposed to granting title, we would be in better stead if there was a future dispute. So for that reason, or for those two reasons, as much as I like the proponents, I cannot vote in favor of this ordinance.
Counsel Cameron, do you have a question?
Yeah, and that's, that's very compelling, and I appreciate that argument, especially since you have the expertise. I would say with regard to future use, as Mr. Glick has repeatedly said, just north of 19th, sort of the Kenny addition, there's people who already own it, it's neglected, they want to fill it in, but they, from my understanding, they own that, and this property is unique. So all we're doing is shifting where there's already, the city has no interest in the ditch one block further south, or further north, one block further north. So I'm not that worried about future use. And also, I think there is a real benefit to them having ownership and therefore interest in maintaining it. And the areas south of 18th are highly neglected and create some fire risk. You know, frankly, they're right under power lines. There's a, there's utilities right there, so I think the city actually benefits from conveying it, especially with the stipulations that are in there, so.
Thank you. Anyone else before we take a vote? Seeing no hands, can we do a roll call vote for the ordinance, please?
Mayor Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Poe-Tentrell?
Aye.
Counsel Cameron?
Aye.
Counsel Fisher?
Aye.
Counsel Hazen?
Aye.
Counsel Reed?
Nay.
Counsel Brown?
Aye.
The ordinance passes?
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the first of our codes. Which one is first? Ordinance 2190, and that is the fire code.
Good, good evening, Council. This is, I'm Jerry Stewart, the Fire Chief, and virtually is going to be Fire Marshal Scott Case, he's isolating currently. So this is going to look a little different. This is about my seventh time doing this, and it's going to look different in a couple ways. In my current role, I really didn't have the time to do the due diligence in evaluating the significant changes of this code. Can you hear that? This one. And, and so Scott is going to do that, but I'm, I'm here to introduce first Fire Marshal Scott Case that you've met, who will give you some technical, the technical answers that are, that are in your packet for the evaluation of the significant changes. From a technological aspect, I'm just going to introduce him and give a background. The sustainability coordinator gave a great segue into why we do this to begin with. The first is that, what I'll say is, the adoption of the International Fire Code is one of a family of many codes, that the building official will come up with the next ordinance. So if you, for whatever reason, don't plan on adopting this, that code, third ordinance, it would probably be who gets to not adopt this one, because they go hand in hand, and they're coordinated, and through each addition. So one of the things, benefits of this, of course, in the past, has been it has, is tied to some level of federal disaster funding, some levels of federal grants. And then really, what this does is it helps our community to maintain a certain level of safety based on advances in technology. It's supported by the Sustainability Committee, especially with the sustainability goals and the energy storage and the solar gardens that you just talked about. Those are all things that have, can have some unintended consequences in terms of public safety that this very code does. And this stands alone from the, the family of codes that the building official has, the, primarily the building, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, energy conservation, residential code, because those are mostly for how the physical environment's built. And the fire code has a part of that, too, most specific to fire and environmental hazards, but it also has a big component of how, once that's received a certificate of occupancy, how people do or don't do things inside that built environment, what it's designed for. And it's iterated over time to include outdoor activities that unfortunately, in this world, we have to start thinking about in a different light. So that's the broad overview of bringing this to you. And with that, I, I don't know if you have any questions for the technical aspect, so I'm going to leave that to Fire Marshal Scott Case, who, who did that analysis simply in his role and mine, I just didn't have the opportunity to do diligence. Thank you.
Chief, appreciate the opportunity to do this from my locked-up, you know, desert, so. I'll just kind of summarize some of the major changes. The, the fire code, or all of the codes as you can hear, where are changed, the under change process that's fairly complex, and it involves a lot of public input, and involves a lot of industrial, or input from the industries as well as, as the fire, you know, fire service and that kind of stuff. And it's a rather rigorous process that goes on every three years. And as the chief referred to, it's one of a family of I codes, as we call them here, national codes, that are designed to work together. And the chief referred to, the code is of particular interest to us, because it's fire and life safety provisions, not just for the buildings as they're built, but for things that are going on inside the buildings, outdoor activities in the community at large. So there were not any real earth-shattering differences between 2018 edition and this 2021 edition. The ones that I sort of picked out after reviewing the changes, just that we'll, we'll most likely either see or hear about in our city. The, the biggest one is, I think if you watch the news at all, it, it seems pretty, it occurs fairly frequently now that you'll see, like giant apartment complexes and those sorts of things that are under construction, and they go up in flames. And while they're no, those are not always necessarily a risk to life, they're a huge property loss, and they're also a huge hit on the city in terms of, or the, the fire district in terms of water use and potential for injury and that kind of stuff. And that's gotten to the point now that the fire code has actually added a whole bunch of new requirements for building under construction. The ones that I think that will most affect us here is that the, in order to receive a building permit, there has to be a site safety plan submitted, and it will appoint a site safety director. It prescribes specifically that there will be daily fire safety inspections that will be done either by the site safety director or his or her designee. And there's actually an enforcement provision that, should we follow up on those and we find out that they're not being done, any violations require issuance of a written notice of violation, and the third such notice can actually be accompanied by a stop work order. And so that's just mostly a mechanism to, to get folks' attention. But what it really does for us is just make sure that they've got an active program, making sure that, that, you know, open, open flames are handled properly, that they, that the fire extinguishers are, are properly placed, that, that there's a general awareness on fire safety. And there's an additional section that, that will probably cause some consternation. I don't think we'll see it much, just based on the, the size, but any building exceeding 40 feet in height, or if there's any multi-story construction that's more than 50,000 square feet per floor, may require fire watch to be put in place during non-working hours. So all of that, again, is, is based on community safety, but this is one of those changes that's driven by not just the fire service, but, but organizations, you know, cities in general outside the fire service. Another topic that I know is of interest to the Council is the mobile food trucks. The 2018 edition sort of solidified what was, what was required of mobile food preparation vehicles, as they're referred to. And the state threatened to, but then ultimately didn't come up with a statewide plan for how to enforce, or, or to sort of really, like, come together with a system that, that made sense for the operators, because what we were faced with was that every, every single fire organization could potentially require its own permit process, and therefore, a single food truck operator could have to have a stack of permits as they move around the metro area or up and down of the front range. The Fire Marshals Association of Colorado stepped in. Golden Fire Department is one of the participating agencies, and basically, everybody who's on the FMAC list agrees to honor each other's permits, and so we've streamlined the process for those operators. It also helps us out in that as food, various food truck operators come through the city, we, we can be confident that they have passed an annual inspection, and that, that our inspections don't have to be, you know, when they're setting up, or, or each time that they show in the city, our inspections can be fairly brief, and we know that, that everybody's being held to the same standard. One adoption, where with the 2018 adoption, one amendment that, that was adopted was an extension to the requirement that every building had to be, the, the fire code required every building to be evaluated for emergency responder communications, in order, in other words, to make sure that our radios would work within their buildings. With the adoption of the 2018 fire code, the city of Council approved an amendment that had a compliance deadline of July 1st of this year. However, I don't think any of us anticipated the COVID situation, including me, tonight, and the supply chain issues that have, have happened. And so one of the amendments that, that we have requested for this adoption is to extend that deadline two more years to July 1st of 2024. Most of the larger buildings in our jurisdiction have, have been successful in, in doing the testing, but we've, we have at least two instances of folks that have not been able to meet that deadline, and so that's one of the changes that we're looking at. A couple of other things of note, there's a brand-new section in the fire code on electrical energy storage systems, has to do with either mobile or stationary battery systems that will supply electrical power to structures, and so I think this goes back to a little bit what we were talking about earlier- And so I think this goes back to a little bit what we were talking about earlier this evening, in terms of where storage capacity for grid failure or whatever comes from. Interestingly, there are, there will be requirements for a permit to install this sort of system in private residences, although unlike most of the requirements in private residences, we just get one shot at it at the very beginning and we don't have any enforcement authority for the continued maintenance. The other thing that this section does is require that the owner, in the event of a fire emergency, or a electrical storage system fire, they are required to stay on scene until it is completely out and also to make notification of qualified personnel to render it safe, as I think has happened on the news a couple of times, we see these fires and even Teslas and things that go on and on and on. And what a huge, huge burden on the fire department to keep watch on it until somebody can come. So it just puts the onus back on the owners to, and then furthermore, back on the companies that produce these things to be able to respond and give us some help in finally extinguishing those fires. There's another new trend that's addressed in the fire code with all of our houses being smart houses, so everything's connected to the internet. There's been a proliferation of home security systems, not just cameras, but burglar alarms and fire alarms that allow you to monitor yourself. One of the indirect or the unintended consequences of that is the potential for those systems to detect a fire and automatically just dial a phone number, an emergency phone number. The fire code now specifically prohibits that because there's no way to monitor the quality of those systems, the number of them in our jurisdiction or any jurisdiction. So the requirement says that while those systems can be in place, the notification has to go actually through a human interface before transmission. So that's kind of a summary of the big changes that will affect us. And I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you might have in this adoption process.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you so much for that overview and glad you were able to join us virtually. Counsel, are there any questions? Counsel Haysman.
I noticed that Section 105.36 discusses open flames in restaurants. And does that include candles on tables or is that just when they do a flambe and it flares up? Do you need a permit to do either of those?
You do not need a permit for candles on tables. I would, let me just pull this up in front of me so I have it. The permit, that's really what it's designed for is for things like tiki torches and open flames that are maintained, not for the flambe, for the preme or whatever. So, I had it right in front of me.
Thank you.
Yes, and that's exactly the intent. And that's, that's the intent of our amendment, is to make it just for maintained open flames within the assembly areas or the dining areas.
On a somewhat more serious note, the issue of fireworks comes up on the 4th of July. And what does the International Fire Code say about fireworks on 364 other days of the year?
The International Fire Code says that fireworks are not allowed 365 days of the year. They should not be possessed, they should not be fired, they should not be stored. And that's straight out of the fire code.
So because of my history here and back in the times when state, in Colorado, there's two, there's two basic types of fireworks, state permissible and illegal. And in the entire state of Colorado, for everybody, including our home rule municipality, fireworks that explode or give a loud report and really, that's based on grains of explosives per device or that leave the ground have been prohibited since 1990 or 91. The city used to allow state permissible fireworks like sparklers, cones, fountains, those smaller things that you see being sold right across the city border, perhaps in Pleasant View or Applewood. And in 2002, during that drought and with some probably not the best actions by one of our fireworks vendors that withdrew their fee after paying it in protest, the city and a combination of all those things actually prohibited all fireworks as it says in the fire code today as it did then. And so that, one of the, my experiences with that enforcing it, it was, I think there was a degree of truth to it and some maybe not. People had this confusion, well, what's allowed and what's not allowed? Some things in the state and some things not. Inherently, inadvertently, they, they were people that didn't intend to do, violate fireworks ordinances, but didn't understand it. And then there's some that probably did understand and just used that as a reason to go ahead and do those anyway. The permissible fireworks, especially in our drier and drier climate, hot weather, they're just as dangerous, they just don't send the danger further to just right next door or right in your own property. So all of those, anything is illegal.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question for Officer Case. Do we grandfather in homes that don't have a human intervention or interface on the emergency response or are we going to try to have a, I don't want to have a lot of false calls and people say, well, I didn't know. And that they, so are we going to grandfather in people that already have these things without a human interface or are we going to actually disallow them because that's what the code says? And do we need to consider a fee structure? So I'm kind of looking at the city attorney around false alarms that actually violate the code. Because we can't afford those.
I think what you're referring to might be alarms that direct dial into the fire department. Is that correct?
Right. That might already exist and then therefore violate the current code, but maybe didn't violate the earlier code.
To my knowledge, there are no such alarms anymore. Any, those are historical, if they exist, they're usually industrial sites or that sort of thing that, where it's a direct dial into the dispatch center. To my knowledge, none of those exist. Everything now is mandated, the code has mandated for a long time, that fire alarms go through a human interface in a dispatch center before they're dispatched. So I don't believe that's going to be a problem at all in our city.
Okay, thank you. Maybe try and answer that a little bit. I don't know of any of those. In the previous days, there were automatic dialers that dialed to 911. The problem is these don't dial to 911, especially if they're on a mobile app, it might be where they're at. And it just might be difficult to find where that's at. However, I would say if we did find those, we would use education and information of alternatives to help those people through that, that situation. In answer to the question of false alarm, please, we have one that exists today. It was in 19, or 2016, in fact, during the budget process and stuff, we'd like me to bring you a, it's time to reevaluate those fees. So we do have that in place today.
Thank you.
And I guess, I guess I was confused about that as well, because I, you know, the human interface isn't, that you talked about with the smart homes and requiring to go through a human interface, I don't actually know what that means. So I have a commercial monitoring system at my house, if the carbon monoxide detector goes off, it automatically dials, you know, but it's through a landline, it's not a smart device. It is an old technology. I still have a landline for that very reason. So what does that mean, it goes through a human interface? As far as I know, even on the old landline systems, there's no human involved.
The human interface is on the other end of that call. So it's an automated call that comes from the alarms, in your case, on the carbon monoxide or for any other residential or commercial system. It's still, it's an automatic system that creates an auto dial. But then what it's doing is going to a central station, a central monitoring station, and then a human is intervened at some point. So it assembles a, you know, it'd be just like, it's a little like calling 911, but there's a computer screen essentially that's sent to an actual dispatcher, depending on the company, depending on the contract, there may be a requirement that they call inside your house to verify, you know, that you're there or to see if there really is a problem. Maybe that's not part of the deal, but then it's an actual physical person that makes the call to the emergency communication center, in our case, to Jeffcom. And so that's the human interface that we're talking about.
Which is different from the smart devices that you said were more the do it yourself rather than a commercial monitoring program.
Correct. Some of those have the ability to, when they make the detection, they can, they can basically make a phone call, you know, and again, some of this is very much up in the air, which is why they wanted to kind of get ahead of it. Could make an automated phone call to Jeffcom and with an automated message say, you know, this is such and such answering service and a fire alarm has been detected at, and we don't want that to be happening because of the, there's no, there's no regulation under the liability and as the chief alluded to, there's really no, there's no guarantee that those are even going to be in our jurisdiction when they go off.
Thank you. That's helpful. Any other questions? Yeah?
Yeah. Seeing this fertilizer comment, which you didn't talk to, makes me think that one of the reasons that was put in place sadly was when Timothy McVeigh gathered a whole bunch of fertilizer and, you know, became a bomber. And I thought that some of those restrictions on quantities were put in place to prevent theft, which could be, which could lead to other issues. And so while it may not be fire code related, are there still rules in place as to how much fertilizer an individual can buy? Do you know?
That's, there's not any fire code regulations on how much an individual can buy. There's regulations on how much a seller can store and have for sale or use, ready for use. I think that's a matter of ATF.
Okay.
And to a little, little further clarify, Counsel, I erroneously skipped over that. I did highlight that in your packet, that there is a change to this year's code about the amount of, very limited, but the amount of fertilizers that can be stored. And what it used to, these, the change is very specific, but it was brought on by small business owners and who were, they were stuck between a rock and a hard place where if they had enough to conduct their day-to-day business stored, it would trigger a requirement for sprinklers. And there was enough scientific evidence to show that there's specific types of chemicals, and again, they're very limited, that in, provided that they're stored in the way that they're packaged and that sort of thing, they are, there's, there isn't a need for sprinklers for it. And the chief is correct, that the limitation on sales or how much one can possess, that that comes from someplace else, it's not the fire code. And I don't think that's the ATF or there's another agency that regulates that.
Thank you.
I'm seeing no other hands. This item does have a public hearing associated with it, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And then counsel will have time for more discussion, so I'll open the public hearing for ordinance 2190. And if anybody would like to speak to it, welcome to, and nobody coming up. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any further questions or are we ready for a motion? All right, would someone like to make the motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 2190.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No? All right, we're quiet tonight. All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ordinance carries. And we are continuing with our codes. Do you want to do it for this one? Okay, hold that thought, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll bring you back up. So counsel, please be back at nine o'clock and we will continue on with.
Codepalooza.
Codepalooza.
All the codes.
All the codes.
You got to plan ahead of time.
Spend a couple.
Yeah.
And you got to get there before seven. Just throw tips.
That's the. We should continue our meeting. As fun as drinking breakfast is.
It's this Saturday, right?
Yeah.
Are we ready ever? All right. Sorry for the delay. We are back.
No worries. Good evening, council. And I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible because, you know, I don't have the luxury of of one code book. So that said, you know, the purpose for adopting the 2021 edition of codes is to update our current adopted 2018 codes and to be consistent with code adoptions and standards of practice in the region and state, which, you know, a lot of jurisdictions across the state have already adopted the 2021 version. So I think it's important for the city and the building division to to be, you know, consistent with other jurisdictions. It does help our contractors and that's, that's an important relationship that we have. We will also be using this opportunity to clean up outdated amendments and codes and to standardize our administrative provisions. The 2021 codes are developed through a governmental consensus process through ICC whereby anyone with an interest in changing the code content has an opportunity to participate and to convince the ICC on its merits of their proposal. As as some of you may be aware of, I'm a past president of the Colorado chapter of ICC. And as such, I've served on and still serve on the code change committee and have attended many code hearings, compliments of the city. Not only just the committee hearings, which are the first process of the codes and new code adoptions, but the the public hearing phase where only governmental folks get to vote on those. So we do have a lot of outside influence from, you know, private industry and lobbyists. But in the end, it's the code officials who are voting on the codes that that get adopted by ICC. To date, the city has previously adopted the 2006, the 09, the 12, the 15, and the current 18 edition of the I codes. These adoptions have allowed the city to take advantage of lessons learned through experiences and application and enforcement of the previous additions. Likewise, technology advances incorporated into the I codes, such as the more recent advances in solar energy technology, have allowed the city to utilize this technology to move forward with sustainability goals while still maintaining a standardized level of safety for citizens who live, work, and play in or respond to emergencies in the built environment. It's therefore, the city of Building Division is proposing that city council adopt by reference as amended the following additions of the 21 building codes. The 2021 International Building Code, the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2021 International Fuel Gas Code, the 2021 International Existing Building Code, the 2021 International Plumbing Code, the 2021 International Residential Code, and the 2020 National Electrical Code, which is already currently adopted by the state and by their statute, where where most jurisdictions would be required to adopt that provision within one year of the the adoption from the state level. It's always been, you know, accepted by the state that, you know, we're slightly behind. It doesn't matter in in much respect as, you know, electricians are licensed through the state. So they're, they're already mandated by the state through the license to to enforce those provisions of the current national electrical codes. As you can see from the the council memo and some of the information as it relates to the significant changes that were presented, these, these are just a sampling of the significant changes in basically all of our our major codes. The IBC, the IRC, and the IECC, those are the big hitters here in Golden. And there are significant changes in in the other technical codes, the plumbing code, the mechanical, and the fuel gas code. And these, again, these are just highlighting the significant changes. There, there are literally hundreds of other changes that are are very minor in nature. And in, and in a lot of cases, they're just cleanup. In fact, every code cycle that comes around, a lot of the code change that comes about is is refining the code, making it a better code for building apartments in jurisdictions to enforce, making it a better code for our builders, something easier for them to understand and use and as well as our homeowners. So one of the things that was brought up earlier by Fire Marshal Case was all of these codes, they're meant to act as a family of codes. And they all, in some manner, can correlate with each other. And one of the things that kind of stuck out to me earlier is when, when Mr. Case was referring to the the battery energy storage systems. Well, traditionally, that that has been covered in the IBC under incidental uses in section 509. They made a slight modification to that code section. And now, most of the provisions that deal with the the battery storage systems now are going to be in section 1207 of the fire code. Part of the reason, in my opinion, behind that is the building codes were never meant to be maintenance codes. And the fire code is, that's one of, one of their primary goals is is maintenance. So that was, I think, one of the reasons why that ended up getting moved. But those, that's just one small example of, you know, how the codes are meant to work with each other. There, there are literally hundreds of other examples that I probably couldn't bring up right now. But in general, when when we do code changes at the national level, every code change is correlated throughout every code book that it's referenced in. So that way, you don't have codes that conflict with each other. So that said, I would like to, I'd like to take any questions that council might have for me right now.
Thank you. There's so many, so much stuff in this code. Council, questions first? Yeah?
Yeah, since we have the right people here, maybe you could just comment on what role, if any, will we have in enforcing fire code? And can we defend a fire if mines builds a 90-foot-tall building at 18th in Washington? Like, what's going to be our sort of tie-in to that?
Well, and I mean, you know, that that's really, that falls all on the, on the fire, the fire code itself, primarily because the, you know, those buildings are all, you know, they're all under the control and and permitted through the state architect's office. So the city of Golden does not have, where there have been some instances where there's, there's an agreement between a jurisdiction and the state to provide services for state institutions, such as institutions of higher learning or even the the lower education systems. So currently, you know, and it's, I don't believe the city of Golden Building Division has ever had any jurisdiction over, over those types of structures, similar as it would be for government buildings. But they, they all do go through a review process through the the district, the fire district. And that's, that's where our fire department and Chief Stricker, you know, have have a say on on things. So how would they, you know, I mean, first of all, there's, the building code has high-rise provisions which deal with really tall buildings and and basically, you know, how how you would go about building that, one, with passive fire protection, and two, with the active systems like the NFP-13 system, fire, fire sprinkler systems. So.
I have a question, and I don't really have a whole lot of information to provide with my question. But in conversations that I'm having with other cities and other mayors, they are talking about a process where they're looking at stretch goals. And that's primarily, I think, in the energy code. Is that something that you or the city are, you know, involved in those conversations around stretch goals? Or are we more focused on on the already defined code that we're adopting versus looking at future? Yeah?
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. That's a good question. I think, you know, you you may see some of those discussions taking place, you know, with with some of our, some of the folks that deal with legislative issues here in the state. The, you know, I'm drawing a blank with regards to the relationship that we have with, sorry. When it comes to the basic codes, no, we're not having that discussion. It's always a discussion with the energy codes. And that's primarily what, you know, people are starting, you know, that's, that's now become a new phrase, if you will, stretch, stretch codes.
Stretch.
Yeah. And it essentially is just above code programs. And, you know, there's a lot of jurisdictions that have already implemented those provisions. And, you know, there, there's always a concern of, you know, how much, you know, growing pains. And and exactly how do you go about implementing those codes such that, you know, it's not all at once and it's not too much for people to bear as far as financially or otherwise? But, you know, that, I don't think I've ever heard those, that particular methodology or or associated with just minimum code standards. And that's, that's primarily 100% of what my job is, is to enforce minimum standards for construction.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a public hearing on this item. So I will open the public hearing for ordinance number 2192, in case anybody wants to talk about it. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, are we ready for a motion or yes?
Move approval of ordinance 2192. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments before we take a vote? Codes are extremely, extremely important, but I know we don't always have a lot of feedback on them, and that's not a reflection of the importance on them.
I have a question, maybe. Could have had it during discussion. But one of the things that we maintain in our code is limited numbers of people living together. And I was told when I was on planning commission that we define a minimum living space in our building code. And I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but do we have a defined minimum square feet for what is considered safe for somebody to dwell in? And I'm just curious if you know what that is.
Okay. So the only place in the code that you're going to find a minimum square footage requirement in it specifically, you'll see it in the IRC and the IBC, it's specific to a dwelling, a bedroom, and that's 70 square feet.
Okay.
So the, there's, there's probably some discussion and have been maybe some code changes submitted to to eliminate those requirements. But that, that has been a code requirement for a very long established period of time that, you know, essentially demonstrates the minimum amount of space and ventilation and light that, you know, somebody might need to be healthy in.
Okay. That's quite small, but.
And it's, you know, kind of a typical bedroom in a house is, you know, you're going to see your master bedroom, which might be 120 square feet. But you're, you know, some of your other bedrooms are are most likely going to be somewhere in that 70, 80, 80-square-foot range, you know, just, just from experience. And there, there is just one other thing that I wanted to bring up as, you know, we have an accessibility code that's associated with the IBC. And it's, it's adopted by reference, which means that we don't actually include it in anything, any of our documents here because quite simply, if you you build something to the IBC, then, you know, by reference, you you have to make that accessible. And the accessibility code did go through some pretty significant changes this last, with the newest addition from the 2009 to the 2017. And and then primarily, that has to do with clearances for wheelchair-turning spaces and things of that nature, mobility issues. And and the reason being, I'm a huge proponent of accessibility, and it's one of the things that we, we really try to pay close attention to here in the city of Golden, understanding that, you know, we, we can only enforce what our minimum code will allow us to do so. But the reasons why that code has gotten significantly more onerous, if you will, as it relates to turning spaces and and just, you're starting to see more motorized wheelchairs. And they're, they don't have the same width as a standard manual wheelchair. So they actually need more room, even if they are motorized, if they can't make turn, if they can't, you know, spin around or something. So that's, that's something that I think, you know, is important to to bring to your attention because, you know, our designers and our real estate folks, they try to maximize every square inch of of real estate they can. And and the new code will be a little bit more restrictive in that manner. So.
I just wanted to share a little bit more information. I, you know, the memo, and you talked about the importance of updating the building codes. And in the metro area, there are a small number of cities have already gone to 2021. There's about 10 more cities that are working on it this year. There are still cities in the metro area who are still working off like 2006 building codes. And so, you know, you have, you know, a real disparity in the consistency for those builders who are building across the metro area is extremely important. So, you know, as we move with other cities to stay on the most recent, it provides consistency. It provides actually some other benefits that they say it provides, lower insurance rates, better bond ratings. There's energy cost savings for homes and businesses. And I found this really interesting. According to FEMA, over a 20-year period, cities and counties. counties with modern building codes avoided at least $132 billion in losses from natural disasters. So, we don't just do this every three years because Scott comes in front of us and says we should do this, but there's a lot of really good reasons to staying on the most recent and up-to-date. And I know we, as a city, have typically always done it in that year following the new codes. So, appreciate you keeping us on top of it and bringing it forward in a timely manner.
Thank you, Mayor. And to that point, you know, you've probably seen my, our BSACs reports that come, and every three years, we get audited. And what that is, is a building code effectiveness grading schedule. Well, there has been a lot of talk amongst building officials across the front range and throughout, anybody who's ever had to deal with that knows that it's a real pain in the butt. And by that, I mean, it's a lot of crunching of numbers and just, in some cases, that can be difficult if you're working with, you know, software that is, doesn't have the capacity for, you know, that type of stuff. But the reason I mention that is because, you know, we have traditionally scored a four on both commercial and residential here with two of the BSACs that I've gone through. And that's, you know, middle of the range, you know, five is, anything below five is considered to be really good. And there probably isn't one jurisdiction I can think of that's got anything, you know, in the one or two range. But now with that BSACs, that rating is now being tied to FEMA and relief funds when we have natural disasters. So, just another level of, you know, if you're not adopting the latest edition of the codes, you're, you could be missing out on some opportunities if your community is subject to a natural disaster. And, you know, I was boots-on-the-ground in 2013 with the floods and up in South Boulder County, so it's a real sad thing to see, and it's real, so...
Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're done with codes for this evening, but we are not done with our meeting.
Code of Blues.
Code of Blues, yes. I will use that term from now on. All right, come on up, please. Sorry, I started the meeting like on a step-off. I don't know what's going on tonight. But we, I'm very excited, we are talking, Mr. Glick is here to talk a little bit further. It's been at least a couple of months since we've talked about arts and culture here at City Council, and we're back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So, we're back to strategic plan, goals and projects. The policy side of achieving the community of Golden that the community desires and deserves. So, this particular goal is under Safe, Inclusive and Engaged. It was called Define Cultural Goals and Engagement Opportunities. We spoke to you about this in March and in April. In March, I impudently pushed back a little bit and asked you, why this goal? What do you mean? And the, what Counsel articulated at the time was that the city's support and relationship for arts and culture in the community has been largely on an ad hoc basis rather than through a clearly articulated vision and set of goals and a specified role for the city organization, and that you felt it would be desirable to move from this ad hoc approach to a more clearly-defined and effective role and structure for the city. And that recognizing the extreme value of arts and culture in the community and the city's support for it over time, the goal was to actually do it better, do it more organized, comprehensively, perhaps avoiding silos. And so, in April, we talked about an approach that involved some stakeholder interviews and discussions and some additional research and the establishment of a subcommittee. Counselor Hesman and the mayor didn't step back quick enough, and so they became the subcommittee. And I think it's been really rewarding. I'll speak for them, but mostly, they're going to speak tonight. But that they had an opportunity to, and I unfortunately, because I don't schedule well, ended up at the lake during some of these interviews, met with other jurisdictions with the assistance of a young lady that's been helping us in the manager's office in the transition, got to meet with other entities. She did research on a number of jurisdictions that are in your packet, as well as summaries of the stakeholder interviews that I did. And so, we are back here tonight with a recommendation that is essentially what's in the memo, but a little bit more nuanced. And so, rather than diving into a bunch of words that I wrote two and a half weeks ago, I think what we'd like to do is have the subcommittee comment a little bit about big-picture, what we're learning and how we think by adopting a version of some of the models we've seen, and specifically, sort of a version of Boulder, Broomfield and Littleton, that we could, from a strategic basis, understand where we, articulate where we want to be as a community and move forward. So, with that, I wonder if Mayor and Counselor Hesman, you have some comments about your experience to date?
Yes, we have comments. I'll start, I'll start. And I don't remember what you just said, but it has been rewarding. It's been great to meet with other cities and talk about what they're doing. And we met with three cities that are all doing it differently, in slight variations, not wildly differently, but based on their specific needs and if they have city-owned facilities or city-owned properties that they lease to other, you know, nonprofits to run an arts and culture-type organization. So, a lot of different examples to look at. And what kind of teased out of all of that, including the stakeholder meetings that happened and the feedback from the different groups, is in order to meet our sort of value of valuing culture and history and education, there's two layers to it. And we saw this implemented in other cities. There's the strategic layer, which is the big picture. What are you trying to do as a city with arts and culture? How are you coordinating amongst organizations? What's your plan? As well as, how are you, as a city, providing funding to support that plan? So, when there's funding involved, and not all cities have funding, Littleton is one city we met with, and they are looking at some dedicated funding, but they don't. But many of the other cities do have grant funding that they provide for arts and culture. So, there's that strategic level. And then we also have within our city, city-owned artifacts, city-owned art, city organizations that are funded directly from our city budget. And that's the more tactical side of the acquisition, the maintenance, the deaccession, the events and the education that we, as a city, put on. And that's the very detailed tactical, day-to-day piece. And that's a lot of what our Public Art Commission does currently for art. And most cities have those two different layers that they worked on in terms of arts and culture. And I think that's what we've been missing, is defining that we have a separation, that we have a need for that very specific, we want to buy this art piece, or we want to get rid of this particular thing. And then the planning side and the granting side. The follow-on to that big-picture piece, and most of the cities who engaged in this work over the last few years did sort of what we normally do, which is hire a consultant who has expertise in this area to help them build a plan that then usually, in all cases, actually led to some kind of council or commission or committee to then implement that plan and work on it. And in some cases, it also identified the need for a sort of a further piece of this, and that's the creative district. And you saw in the matrix that some cities like Durango formed a creative arts district. And that's a nonprofit of which the city is maybe one member of it, but it is a nonprofit collaborative of many members of arts and culture across the city. It is not a city-run type program. It's not like a DDA where it's a, you know, heavy involvement in the city. It, you know, the city may be one member. But that came after their plan, to identify the geography of an arts district, the benefit, you know, who would be involved, all of that. But that's where you see the arts district piece as well, and that's that more collaborative across many entities piece of it. So, that's kind of the broad view of, I think, distilling down some of what we saw other cities implemented that I think could work well here for Golden. Paul, what would you like to add?
What she said. No, I agree with her, with the idea of having a strategic look, kind of a tactical look. And then maybe sometime thereafter, based on what we did in the first two, we might think about a creative arts district. There are 30 cities in Colorado that have those creative districts, and, you know, it's not a burning priority immediately, but it would be something, it would be beneficial. The, you know, what do you do next in terms of how-to? We would think that bringing on a, as they did in Littleton, they brought on a consultant to have them, help them do a master plan, an arts and culture master plan. And we think that would be something we could actually do in the short term, is bring on that consultant, help us map out what a master plan would look like. It's not the master plan. That master plan would be something that Counsel would look at in the future, but right now, it would get going on that. Initially, we would think about a strategic council, and I don't mean council with a big C like the city council, but it would have players from across the city. And that's not immediate, but it would be, as the master plan begins, it would have to have an input and participation. Mayor, how am I doing? Is that, you know, well, that's the idea of having that upper group that looks, that would look at and help adopt and recommend a master plan. So, that is the basic outline that we're thinking of now. In the short term, it could be that Mr. Glick and myself and Laura and the city manager could continue to shape this. And perhaps if the council agrees, that we would locate and bring forward to the council the idea of hiring a consultant and bring that back to council and make that the initial step. And then maybe in the November or something, you know, we can think about this council in terms of how that shapes out of the beginnings of a master plan and bring that back to council and see if that's the direction that council wants to go. So, that was, I think, some of our thinking. If I've deviated, please, Mayor, correct me.
No, I think that's exactly what we were talking about, and that's, you know, tonight to get the feedback from council on a couple of potential next steps. The other piece that you didn't mention was more that tactical piece, and the Public Art Commission is finishing their engagement, or maybe they finished. I'm not sure where they are in the final report on the Public Art Commission, but they're getting close to finishing their work. And they are open to adding, I believe, more pieces under their purview. And I think one of the things that we've talked about that might be something that we could, if we wanted to move forward with it, it might be a great look for our boards and commissions subcommittee, is extending the authority we are giving the Public Art Commission to go beyond just the visual arts, to make it more of an arts and culture commission for that tactical work. And that may include wrapping in the museum and history park because of the similar mission of city-owned artifacts that acquire, maintain, deaccession, education events in the city, or education events in the city, but all city-owned resources. And so, that would be another piece that I think potentially we could look at since city council does authorize the scope for each of our boards and commissions for that public art commission, if we want to turn that into a public art and culture.
So, before, too many questions. What's different between that and what was in the memo was the memo implied a little bit more sequential, that you would actually set up, oh, and we are guilty of calling it a commission or a council and five other different names.
Committee, board.
But it kind of implied you set up the strategic body first, and then they shepherd a arts and culture master plan. There's a couple of concerns with that. The more we talked about it was, one, will, between staff and council, will we know how to set it up first before we're partway through the cultural master plan? So, should it be more concurrent, which is what Counselor Hesman was saying? So, that's the biggest difference with the memo, is what we're suggesting is starting with the subcommittee and staff to work on an RFP for arts and culture master plan and concurrently putting together the structure, but not necessarily the members yet, of the arts and culture council. And actually not waiting for the '23 calendar year, but possibly starting much sooner to try to keep making progress. So, that's the difference between what was in the memo and what the committee and staff are presenting this evening, looking for comments, concerns, questions and direction.
Well, I love it. I'm all on board. Let's do the RFP. I love the idea of the commission, committee cadre. I don't know what other C words you can throw in there that they could possibly be...
Well, we were talking about a creative council.
Oh, creative council.
So, we've got some more Cs.
No, I love it. I love that whole idea. And in part, one of the things, though, I just want to say, I'm so grateful for Mayor Protan Trout for putting us on this path with our coffees with counselors, is I've become a lot more familiar again, familiarizing myself with the Golden Vision 2030. And if you look in there, that value theme F, that is, it's history and education and arts and culture, and it's all together. And so, I really like that idea of where you're heading of that we can give some thought to how those get combined and restructured and reorganized altogether, and they can kind of all have a logical home together. So, I think that's awesome.
One question regarding maybe timeline has to the Public Arts Commission in adding extra components. Would that be done as a result of this, or is that a separate track that we would be looking at to be adding those, potentially looking at those components?
I'm looking at it as a separate track because the consultant would be more on that strategic side, master plan, you know, community-wide versus the commission is more of that tactical. Do we want them to do more than just visual art? Because the strategic, if we create a council or if we create, they wouldn't be doing the detailed, should we post this event or buy this piece of art? Littleton has separated it out very effectively over the last couple of years, and the folks that are in that tactical space, you know, have a very direct mission on, that's separate from the other group that's working more across the community with organizations and granting funds and kind of that different level.
One question for council would be, would it perhaps be staggered that we start with the, get the master plan process started, get the strategic part started before actually starting asking the board and commission subcommittee or somebody to look to see, how does this affect board and commission? And the other issue is for the city manager's department to look at, does, is there an implication for a reshuffling of staff responsibilities? And we don't think we know that exactly yet, but you don't want to wait too long. That there are timing issues for both the tactical on the board and commission side and the tactical on the staff side. But I think we would want to just get our feet a little bit more wet getting the strategic started.
Okay. That's helpful. And so, it sounds like there's, either way, there's a carved-out area where the, something like the Public Arts Commission, whatever that evolves into, continues to have a role because there's this sort of city-related tactical stuff that's going to have to continue. Maybe with the part of Golden that also extends to the amphitheater and programming and paid programming and other things that start to tie into this as well, and where that goes, I don't know.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that that idea of the city-owned resources that are programmed or purchased or that needs a home, which is why the Public Art Commission was formed in the first place because we had all of these city-owned resources that didn't have a home. And so, I think the expansion of that may make sense, again, to have that conversation of the museum and history park, does that belong together, you know, and not with PRAM? Or is there some other, some other merging of the arts and culture? Or is there some other, some other merging of the arts and culture?
Yeah. Well, thank you for bringing this to us. And I think we talked about this as our strategic planning. And I was of the mind that we should maybe go ahead and merge Public Art Commission and the museum and the history park. And I still think that that might make sense to do independent of any of this stuff. And I think I would like to see concurrent, well, my thought about putting together a commission, council, whatever, of people that already are on those boards and maybe some community members is to give this strategic plan, if we go the route of a consultant, kind of a customer. Like, I don't want to be the customer for this strategic plan. I would like to see a bunch of, maybe a PRAM member, a Public Art Commission member, somebody from the museum, both staff and members, all together, along with maybe some community members, to be the customer for that strategic plan and really vet it and maybe form that as a, as they're kind of the customer for this plan. If it's just us, frankly, I'm frustrated at how often we get strategic plans, and they're not what we wanted. And so I'm wondering how we can learn from our experience of having asked for something and getting a consultant's input and not being, and not giving us what we wanted, which is how to implement it. I mean, I get that it's strategic, but it should lead directly to something that works for Golden. So I guess I'm on board, but I'd like a little different approach on this. Just going out with an RFP. I'm not sure that, I'm happy with that approach.
Yeah. I think the examples, the couple of cities that have gone this approach that we talked to, they started with city staff and, you know, internal with getting the consultant and defining what, and part of that process and part of what the consultant and expert was define the body that the council or the commission, that, you know, what was needed in that to be the owners and to work on it. And so rather than us saying, let's form a group and pick one person from here and one person from here and figure it out, that that's part of that process that happens once we have, you know, the consultant on board is defining the membership that we would want to take ownership and work through that. And I think that was both Littleton and Durango kind of formed their commission with their consultant and defining how many people and what expertise. And did they want outside nonprofit groups on it? Or no, they're going to be granting money. Let's not have these outside groups that might be asking for money as part of it. But I think that was part of their process.
Okay. Don, I agree with you. And we don't want to be trying to run it here as a council. We want to.
We need outside voices, please.
Behold!
Okay, I just, I agree with Don.
Okay. Yeah. It's very noisy now.
Some of us have our outside voices all the time.
No, yeah.
You know, I mean, it sounds like Don's asking to have the chicken and the egg at the same time, and which I kind of agree with. Maybe some sort of ad hoc group to help advise along the way before we kind of establish something more formal. I could see us developing and not having it be us would be a real benefit to us. But, I mean, so I, I'm not against that idea of an informal, you know, maybe a staff advisory or a city manager advisory group or something to help with the subcommittee to try to help formulate that. I would not be opposed to that idea. I mean, I think that, I can see how that could benefit the, how fast we actually develop it.
And I think Paul had mentioned, you know, if we wanted to, if council wanted to move forward with the step of an RFP and a consultant or to move forward quickly, that we would, we would continue working on it as a subcommittee with staff to get that part started so that we could move quickly and not have to coordinate another group or put staff resources on, you know, working with another group, that we could just keep working through this initial process. And then obviously, once there's a consultant to select, that could come back to council for a decision.
But invariably, they would ask this question that Council Cameron has just brought up. Who is the, quote, steering committee, policy group, whatever? And what I wrote down after your question was, is there, is there some sort of interim group? Or is there a group that is set up not before the consultant is selected, but one of the very first things is, help us define what stakeholder group is the right group for the strategic plan? Because it can't just be staff, it can't just be city, and council has lots of other things they need to do. So I'm hearing what Council Fisher and Council Cameron are saying that without taking six months to figure it out who the group is, we can be responsive so that we're getting the right peoples in the room.
Right. And one other follow-up is my concern, you know, I love our city government and all, but I feel like we sometimes have silos. And I would want this RFP to be so broad that nobody, nobody in one department feels like it's their baby. Like, this is so broad that it needs to be at the city manager office level. And they really need to have latitude to be able to, you know, make suggestions that might impact staffing. And that's something that we can't necessarily, you know, weigh in on because that's not what council's role is in this. But I would want whatever study we do do to be able to have those discussions. So it needs to be, you know, pretty high-level, if that makes sense, so that individuals don't just seek their own outcome, as it were.
Yeah, and Paul Turner, but I think what we heard from some of the cities is there are consultants or experts who do this a lot for cities and can probably help us, you know, initially with that, who would make the best steering group? Or who, you know, who, is it departments? Is it community members? Is it a combination? Is it, you know, what's going to get us to the best outcome in terms of involvement? Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that really this conversation is helpful for us to have guidance, what your vision is for this. But we haven't really talked internally about how this would work timing-wise or who and all those things. So it's not necessarily something that we've planned for happening in the next few months. So there's still a lot of work to be done internally to figure out how this all the way gets developed. So I think this is all helpful to help guide what that looks like. But I just want to make sure that you all understand that we haven't talked about this internally a ton and thought about how we're going to approach this yet.
Thank you. Other comments, direction, thoughts?
Just like, I love this approach. I didn't say that to begin with, I was thinking of this specific question. But, I mean, I love this approach. I think we'll get exactly where we need to be. So, and I'm not worried about the timing and stuff. I think staff figure that out, subcommittee, that's great. But, yeah, my two cents is having a little bit more of established kind of routines on both the strategic and tactical side, I think is fantastic.
Great. Are we good? All right. Thumbs up. We're moving forward. Would someone like to make a motion about the time before we get to the next topic? Because I hope that it's nine forty-eight.
I'd move we extend the time to, we suspend the rules on time.
I know. I don't know if that, didn't we have this problem the last time? Is that?
Because if you just extend it to 10:30, then we're still in trouble. So that's why.
We're just to suspend the rules. Okay. So we have a motion to suspend the rules. Is there, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any aye, any opposed? Okay. Next topic.
So I would propose to skip most of the conversation about lodging because it isn't that urgent, including, do you have direction yet for the visitor impact, 20% for '23 and '24? Should it be downtown? Should we spread it around a little more? And focus you to page three of the memo about the thriving community projects, bearing in mind that Mr. Henson and I do believe that we will be right at $2 million this year and with any sort of good growth in the lodging industry, above that in '23 and '24, which makes the thriving community portion in excess of $1.6 million per year. And you have not committed '22 money. And whether you give direction for the entire '23, '24 budget or just some direction, at some point, you will want to give direction as to what to do. So the, basically, the solid bullet and the three hollow bullets are asking, is there a need to more closely or differently define thriving community, the universe of projects, thriving community projects in the near term, if we're talking '22, '23 or '22, '23, '24? And the issue that you've talked about but haven't really addressed yet of will there be ongoing commitments or set-asides? And, for example, for arts and culture, maybe there won't be initially, but there would be potentially down the road. Maybe the first thing funded would be the study. And that could come out of the '22 money, if you wanted to. But are you ready to give direction of, are you looking for big impactful, specific projects? Are you looking back to the application process I brought you a year ago that you didn't like? Or?
Definitely.
If there are big impactful projects that would make sense for the next couple of years, do you know what they are yet? So we could spend zero time on this and just deal with it as we work through budget. But that's the question for you at some point, if you're ready.
Thank you. It's been a little bit since we've talked about in detail our expectations around the lodging tax budget. So it might be worthwhile to just have a little bit of conversation. Otherwise, it comes to us in the budget, in which case it's a whole budget conversation. Councilor Fisher.
Thanks. You know, Steve, those are fairly great questions. This really gave me food for thought on this. And I think a couple of things over the next couple of years. I don't know that we want to start pre-programming consistent expenditures just yet until we start to see the universe of the types of things we would want to fund. So I, and I really like the idea of setting aside a set amount for next year that would be considered grant money. So you have a predictability to it. And then staff can start to arrange what that grant funding might look like in terms of the requests. And I'm okay with an idea of even a small, medium, large category to see what are the types of things that people might bring to us, especially keeping it a little bit looser the first couple of years. So my thinking is, the first couple of years, we're kind of exploring kind of where this is going to go. And then it'll start to settle down into the types of things that we feel really make sense for this thriving communities category. So in terms of, over the next few years, I'd say just set a target and then start funding it. Because we don't have to spend all the money upfront right away. We can spend a smaller amount. We don't have to say, oh, it's going to be $1.6 million to start. We could say it's a million or half a million unless a special project comes up. And then you also mentioned the thriving communities. What are the general categories? I think the one thing that I might possibly, I guess, ask city council to think about expanding it to is to look at things, and we'll also look at this regarding the marijuana tax money as well, things that, we talked about thriving communities and allowing people to have quality of life here in town. And I think of a couple of categories. I think of things like food insecurity and opportunities for people as the community is incredibly successful and prices go up and costs go up. Maybe food insecurity might be one of those areas where we can allow more people to feel like they're having an opportunity to thrive in the community. And then also looking at all these plans that we've come up, we're looking for the newer, better, best plans that are coming along. But we also have a lot of CIP things that have gone by the wayside because they were really important quality-of-life issues for the community that are impacted even more by the increased traffic and the increased presence of folks. But they've lost, they've gotten dusty, they've fallen off the CIP list because we didn't have money at the time to be able to address them. So I'm also okay with that category of things being part of what we look at as things for people who have been here a long time and maybe were waiting for things to have happened for a long time. So not just looking at new things, although new things, paved paths, off paths, and paved paths are great, but also looking at maybe some of those things where we've looked at in the past and said, well, we're not a community that has the resources to tackle those things right now. So I think those are kind of my two thoughts based on those questions you kind of said.
So I think I agree with what Councilor Fisher just said. In terms of the initial grants or setting aside money for initial grants, I think that's a great idea, at least in two areas. One is the cultureals, and the other might be assisting with aging in place. We're possibly developing a program there. But I'm very concerned that we have a punch list of long-term, high-ticket items that I think are part of a thriving community, including broadband, solar, parks, open space, and sustainability electrification, all of which are part of a thriving community. So I would like to have a discussion tonight about, you know, how we portion that up and maybe set aside a pool of money for long-term, big-ticket items.
Councilor Hazeman.
I agree with Councilor Reed. In terms of one item that we've talked about and talked about and talked about, and these are the housing opportunities. And we, this past year, allocated but didn't spend $1 million with regard to the Golden Hills possibilities. But I think that we ought to be thinking about a thriving community with a, without designating a specific item like Golden Hills, but to have a housing fund for housing opportunities. And that's, doesn't have to be all the money, part of some, but let's have a fund with something in it. And if we, if we see it grow, fine. If we have an opportunity that comes up, we'll have a fund already established. So that's one area of priority that I would like to see us as part of the thriving community. So I look at that and I look at what we say in our strategic plan. And items 2B, 3B, and 4B all refer to those kinds of projects. And so those are, I don't know if they were listed in order, but they seem to be at the top. So I'd like to be sure that they, that they get that attention. In terms of how we decide which ones are the priorities, I'm perfectly happy, Mayor, for you to find a, you know, somebody to give us a recommendation on what those might be versus us trying to set our own list and then prioritize here on a real time. I just think we need some help with that. The other area, you know, I've talked, we've talked about is the multi-use fields. And that's a thriving community. We've gone back and forth on that one. And I think that that's on the current list of the thriving community in our strategic plan, and I'd like to be sure that it stays there. And of course, we discussed the arts and culture. But arts and culture are going to say, when are we going to get our money? That's probably going to occur to one or two people. And we need to, as we said, setting up that fund, we need to think about, how are we going to do that? How are we going to allocate? Because I think we're going to do some of that sooner than later. And it's going to be a question mark about, do we do it as council initially and work on that master plan for arts and culture and figure out how they're going to do it eventually? Or do we wait for that and not allocate anything until we actually have that in place? I don't know the answer. But I just want to be sure that we don't ignore arts and culture when we're going to have a fund, some type of fund set up for them. My thoughts.
I agree with a lot of what's been said. And actually, my mind went to the multi-use soccer fields, too, like resolving that issue. So I definitely like the idea that we're working towards a big thing. It doesn't have to be every year we do a giant thing, one giant thing. But we, I like the idea of working towards something big. But the other things we do with that funds, I want them to be really visible. And it's clear that this is being paid for from the lodging tax. And I want that to be clear and transparent to the community, that this is what they got. This is, even if it's a small thing, you know, this is what we're achieving with that funds that you all approved. And I think, you know, Councilor Fisher touched on this about food insecurity. And I think this was discussed down here, too. I've been reading a lot of things that talk about the housing crisis right now is a much broader, big-picture societal affordability crisis of food, cars, transportation, housing, college. All of it is becoming increasingly unaffordable. So a grant, I think it's really important to have some money in there that is going to, in one shape or another, whether it's food insecurity, housing, whatever, is going towards that big picture, addressing the broader.
towards that big picture, addressing the broader affordability crisis in all sorts of things. And I think that's a key element of what thriving is, what we intended when we created that strategic plan, and what we, what we want to see some of that achieve.
Hey. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to echo, of course, Council Hazeman's suggestion about housing and a housing fund. I think that's a great idea. So one of the things I want to investigate, and I don't remember the wording on the, the vote, was whether we can bond this revenue stream. And so, one of the ways to build up a bigger pot of money to do bigger things would be if we could bond it. So I'd just like clarity on that the next time we talk about it. And other, you know, ideas that I think I'm interested in looking at, and it might be in the 20% on the visitor impact side, but a parking management plan that includes maybe electronic signs and, you know, what spots are filled, and, you know, sort of like a really comprehensive parking, parking management that might involve spending some capital. And then that circulator bus idea that we've had for a while of getting people to park remotely, even when we eventually build Heart of Golden out down at 304, you know, tents, that's just too far for some people. So circulator bus is still something that...
That goes elsewhere.
That's in the mix.
Right.
And the other ideas I, I think are great, too, but those are my biggies.
Yeah, I, I think this is always the challenge when we talk about it. There are so many big things, and this, this money is not going to cover them all. I also like the idea that, you know, we are working towards a bigger thing with this and not just chunking out the money, you know, like, a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here every year. And, you know, maybe there's a focus. Some amount of money goes to the circulator bus, it goes to the shuttle bus program in a year, and I'd, I'd be all for that. But that, maybe there are things that have been mentioned here that would be recurring programs, like, you know, a, whatever we talked about, a utility fund, or you talked about affordability fund, you know, that may be, you know, in order to establish something that is to assist individuals in our community, we would just have a certain amount, and we're not programming it, but we would identify, it would go to, like we do with right now grants to some outside organizations for housing individuals. The city provides money to the Action Center and to, you know, some of the other nonprofits for that purpose, that we would identify, you know, where that would go. On the arts and culture, I, all for, let's use some of this year's money to start this plan and bring on the expert, so that by next year, we will have the definition of who is arts and culture in Golden, who's eligible for the money, and the council that's going to take the grant applications and give it out, so that we have that structure in place to be able to successfully and equitably distribute the funds. To do so, we are not at that position right now this year to be able to do that. So I am all for and totally support, you know, using some funds this year to, to get that all set up. But I think that's going to be our challenge. Do we, as a council, on an annual basis, define sort of one target? This year it's transportation and a bus, and the next year it's housing, or, you know, for one big thing, or it's a park? Or, you know, how, how do we assign the priorities for that fund on a ongoing basis? Because there's lots of potential uses. And I think when we have the budget discussion, you know, the city team will, will come to us with suggestions of those specific projects or specific dollar amounts that we can consider at that time.
So believe it or don't, this was helpful, and we're happy to stop now, but to talk about calendar.
There's some mud.
So from the boards and commissions and staff, capital requests were submitted a week ago. And in the, in the transition period, one of the things I offered to Ms. Lorenz is that I would try to ease some of her burden in handling policy with just assembling stuff with Mr. Hanson and his staff. So the first date that we're expecting to present that to you is September 20th. And I can guarantee you that with the Heart of Golden conversation that we're going to have on August 9th, that if you do everything you want to do, we do not have enough money right now. I can just guarantee you that. So there will be unfunded or underfunded things that you've mentioned tonight that could be on a list for this. So on August 9th, we're hoping to talk to you about Heart of Golden adoption, but also Heart of Golden next phases. We were going to talk about marijuana tonight because there is the excise tax, because there is the overlap that, to date, you've defined housing insecurity and food insecurity as public health. Now, there may or not be as much money as you want for that in that funding source, but you were already too busy tonight. So right now, that's August 9th, it could be a different date. On August 16th, Ms. McCubbin will be presenting, in addition to the Housing Needs Strategy, a proposal for the Housing Trust Fund. So per your direction a few months ago, we're already bringing back, without even knowing what money might go in it, the Housing Trust Fund. So, and one of, Council Cameron, one of your comments the other day was, all these things that we said we were going to get done, we need to get them on the calendar and actually get them done, and, and we took it to heart that that's, we're, we need, but we need to not overload you in any one meeting. So I don't think this waits till either the, some of the big-ticket capital things might wait till September 20th, but doesn't necessarily wait till the operating budget comes out in October, that it's a conversation that Ms. Lorenz and I will probably be bringing back to you possibly as early as August 23rd to keep this conversation going, based on what you'll talk about on the 9th and the 16th. So with that, this is quite helpful, and, and your list is much bigger than I thought it was.
Always, always bigger. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Claus.
All right. We are to council, staff, comments, new business, Council Hazeman.
I think someone else will probably want to talk about the pancake breakfast, so I will let someone else bring that up. Buffalo Bill Days is upon us, and it's going to be this coming weekend. It's a big event, and I, my legs will probably carry me with the Rotary Club for six blocks down in Washington on Saturday morning. So I think that's, it'll be a fun time, and I look forward to that. And finally, Rotary is still selling peaches, so peaches, peaches. If you go to Rotary Club of Golden Hill, you can't go very far down the page before you see peaches. So that's it for me, thank you.
For those of you that are not going to the parade, the farmer's market will be in the Golden High parking lot, so please come visit my neighborhood.
Pass for tonight?
No, no comments?
Oh, thank no comments.
No. I had comments, and I've forgotten them, because that's how tonight is going. But I, no, Ms. Mendoza has a comment, but sir, I know that one.
I do have one comment. So I was notified that we have a vacancy on the Jefferson County Corrections Board. We actually have two vacancies. There's the regular position and then an alternate position. So council, I need to make a recommendation on that soon.
Is that one of us, or is that a person, is that a citizen?
Yeah. So we were surprised by this a few years ago, because we hadn't appointed anybody in, like, 10-plus years, the same individual just kept going, and we didn't know council appointed someone for terms until they decided they weren't able to do it anymore. So at the time, all I remember is I participated in the interview process with Marjorie, but that's all I remember, and then we, we selected and recommended a council. We're going to get more information and timelines, but I would ask if there's two counselors or if our boards and commission subcommittee would be, we need two people to basically interview and make a recommendation for that position, so that we can authorize it as council. So that's my ask tonight related to this community, or this corrections board. That's a county board, but we as a city need to appoint an individual and alternate, so...
So let me clarify, so boards and commissions took this on, we could, for example, circle back to people that we didn't appoint to boards, or even people we did appoint to boards, and we could propose those people? Or it has to be, we have to propose council members?
No, it's not council members. What we did last time is we, we put it out there publicly, and we ended up with a lot of applications, actually, of really qualified individuals in the city who were interested in serving on that board. Certainly could go back to people who would apply previously, hey, you might want to apply for this board, or if you know people, you know, tell them to apply, but it would be a similar application, application process and an interview, but just for this particular...
Where do you find out what that board does?
That is what we will...
On the Jefferson County website, I can send you a link to, on the Jefferson County website that describes that board and what they do and what the requirements are and the time to admit and all of that info.
And my recollection is, there's some fairly specific technical things. It's not just a, they don't need just anybody, there, there's, it's kind of a specialized range of folks who will have background and expertise that would be interested. So I think that sounds like a great approach. I think the boards and committee, boards and commissions, subcommittee should just do it and put out a, publish a thing and get some applications and...
Get some thumbs.
Pick one.
I, I think all the thumbs are going up, except for the two individuals on the boards and commissions subcommittee. Just want to head nod to make sure you're okay with that.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate that, because that, again, somehow, apparently, they don't let us know that we need to appoint somebody until like the week before they made us the appointment, so we didn't realize their timeframe. So this, I think, will allow us to move quickly, and you both can just work with Monica on getting that application out and, and all that coordinating pieces. So thank you for that. Okay. All right, we got a point. Ms. Beckenbarger, anything for us? Okay. Ms. Lorenz? Anybody in the back? All right. We need a motion to go into executive session. Is anyone prepared to make that motion?
Chair, I'm ready. I move to go into executive session following conclusion of the regular business meeting pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402 (per N4) per N.A., 24-6-402 (per N4) per N.B., and 24-6-402 (per N4) E, and Golden Municipal Code Sections 1.03.050 (per N1), 1.03.050 (per N2), and 1.03.050 (per N5). To discuss the acquisition, lease, or transfer of a real property interest to determined positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategy for negotiations, and instruct negotiators, and for obtaining legal advice from the city attorney regarding the Rooney Roads Sports Complex and related agreements. And I further move to adjourn the city council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned to executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm the parent, can I say parents 1, 2, and 5?